Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Chambers. If we can all rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have Edward, right? Grillo? Come on up front here. We're going to be recognizing this fine young man in just a little bit, but we wanted to ask him to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll turn it over to you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Edward. We'll get to you. Chief White, would you do the honors for us, as always? Don't worry about it. The news crew definitely wants to get the invocation.
Good evening, Council. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we ask blessings on our guest recipient here tonight that just gave our pledge, Lord, and we ask that you provide him safety. We're very proud of his accomplishment. And Father God, we're reminded tonight of Oviedo High School senior, Britton Daniel, who's on his cancer journey. And we pray for him and his family, and that he would be healed, Lord. And Father God, we pray for those that are in the way of this massive hurricane in the Pacific, that you afford them protection and safety and get this thing passed quickly. We pray for our meeting tonight and all those in attendance. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity. We thank you for those who are willing to serve. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. All righty. At this time, I would like to call our meeting to order. It is approximately 6:32 PM. We have all members present this evening. As mentioned earlier, our first order of business is recognition of Edward Grillo. So if Council can all join me down up front.
All righty. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, one of the great things that we get to do here at City Council is to recognize the youth in our community, whether it be for athletics or academics. We love to bring them all down and recognize them. Edward is here for his achievement as a first-place winner in the state of Florida High School High Tech 2017-2018 Speech and Research Contest. Man took first place in the state of Florida, so give him a round of applause. And I'm going to turn this over to Councilman, Deputy Mayor Britton, in a second, because Deputy Mayor Britton sits on the Board of Boys and Girlstown, where Edward is currently a resident, correct?
Yes.
And one of the great things, though, that I just want to point out that I read in here, Edward, is that you're graduating high school a year early?
Uh, yes.
Yes? Well, good for you, man. Congratulations. Let me turn this over to Deputy Mayor.
First, I want to introduce Virginia. Why don't you say, introduce yourself and give a few words about Boyz Town?
Hi, I'm Virginia Lott. I have been working for Boyz Town for almost a year. I'm an assistant family teacher, and I'm able to work with all of the children on campus. I have been able to work with Edward Lott these past couple of months, and he's an extraordinary individual.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, Boyz Town's a foster care agency that is going on its 100th year anniversary. I think last year was its 100th year anniversary. They're based out of Omaha, Nebraska, which you may have seen the movie with Mickey Rooney. It's still there. And Oviedo happens to have the second-largest campus other than in Omaha. And they do a lot of good work. They have about 100 kids out there or so.
Close.
Close to 100. They do really good work. And I had the pleasure of hearing Edward's speech at one of the events a few weeks ago, and it's really inspiring. And I believe it's on YouTube, is it? Did they send it out on YouTube?
I still don't remember anything about that.
Okay. But it really was inspiring. So I wanted to ask you, you had to go through how many, three different stages?
Yeah, three levels.
And the last one was in Tallahassee?
Yes, it was.
How was that?
Tell us about your experience.
Well, I really don't know what to say about it. It was pretty good for me. And usually, I'm very comfortable with speaking out in public, you know? For me, it just comes naturally. It might just be my personality, whatever. But I guess the biggest thing I could say was, ironically enough, I considered the regional level, which was the level below the state level, to be my goal. Because once I reached the state level, that was pretty much it for me. If I lost, I lost. If I won, I won. But even then, I still had a little bit of pressure, you know, to do my best at that last level. Like, I was very nervous and I was very stiff, ironically enough, even though I said, "I'm good with this." And, but overall, honestly, when I heard that, well, they declared the second-place winner because they just wanted to make it more, you know, they didn't just want to say my name and then the second-place winner to feel bad. But the point was, you know, they, you know, when I heard that, I was actually very excited just in general, because, to be honest, I've never been recognized for much. And when, before I came into any foster care system or anything, I pretty much didn't have experiences. I didn't go to concerts. I didn't go to any, anything with my friends all the time, because I always was so focused on the now and with my family, because I loved them so much, that, to me, that was something completely different, you know? Being able to do these things and to be recognized here by the Board, as well as, you know, in Tallahassee, it's just amazing. It truly is. So I wanted to say thank you, guys, for, you know, calling me up here, even though I got informed at the last moment.
Well, that's because of Deputy Mayor.
It's okay. It's okay. But that's okay. It really is an amazing thing, so thank you so much.
Absolutely. Our pleasure.
Edward, we have a few mementos for you from the city. We've got a little notebook for you, and this is just a little token of gratitude. I hope you can enjoy that. It's a little, you can open up when you get home. You'll be surprised what it is.
Yes.
All right. Well, congratulations.
Why don't we get some pictures here?
Get right up front.
I guess you got a good idea of what kind of a persuasive speaker he is.
All righty. All righty. That is the end of our ceremonial items this evening. So next point of business is I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the August 6, 2018 Regular Session.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion?
Looks good.
Looks good.
Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're going to go into the public comment portion of our meeting. Now, I do have some written requests on a specific item. You'll be called for that specific item. The public comment portion is to address Council on anything on the agenda or anything that isn't on the agenda. And we do have one written request this evening, and that is from Mr. Philip Gold.
Say, why am I first?
Because you're on top.
Yeah, right. I know. Philip Gold, 2600 Doubletree Place.
Obviously, you're in Oviedo.
On the, you want me to keep this just on the lighting? Because I had two, right?
Do you have one on the lighting also?
Yeah.
Okay, if you do.
You want me to do the other one first?
Yeah, yeah. Do Mitchell Hammock first.
Okay.
And then the lighting can come later.
Okay.
Yeah, I have another one for you on the lighting. I'll call you.
Okay, okay. I'm sure most of you know, and everybody that drives Mitchell Hammock, the left side of the left lane is getting worn down very, very bad. It's overused and needs, to me, Mitchell Hammock is getting to the point where it needs repaving or repair, whichever way feels best. And my other thing associated with that, I know some people are not in favor of it that live on 419, but I strongly feel the city should approach the county again and say, "Hey, can we get McCullough put through to 419 to relieve our traffic?" We all know that the university's gotten beyond normal limits, and a lot of the traffic, I believe, is going through Oviedo that doesn't have to go through.
That is true.
And so if we could reapproach the county again or whatever, you just need both counties to get McCullough put through and relieve our problem. And it's costing us money, because we have to repair Mitchell Hammock.
That, the bridge, Phil, as you know, is a very complicated issue.
I know that is.
It's out of our jurisdiction and, you know.
But it's costing us money.
It's in our, I think it's in our transportation master plan for that bridge. But it's not our bridge, but it is.
Yeah, right.
We do agree. It takes, I don't remember the percentage, but a whole lot of traffic off of the city streets.
Yeah.
But thank you, Phil.
Okay.
Anything else, sir? I'm sorry.
Okay. The other thing was the lighting. You want me to bring that up?
Yeah, we'll bring that up. I'm going to call everybody for that, so that way you're on the record during that hearing.
Okay.
All righty. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the Council on anything but lighting?
Someone's hand went up over there.
Sorry.
Is there someone else? Because I'm late, so we're supposed to.
No. This is public comment on anything but lighting, and name and address to the record in three minutes.
Hi. I wanted to be, have a written preparation. I'm Helen Jones. Been here three times before. Live in Alafoya Woods. The news this week was disturbing to me, probably disturbing to a lot of people, but it was especially disturbing to me, because when I heard the name of an officer from Oviedo, it was so familiar to me. I know that name so well, because I've been trying to get everybody's attention on that name for 11 months, and nobody's listening. And the name above that person, who is no longer with Oviedo Police, who is now running for City Council, his name I put out here, too. I don't need to repeat it. Go back and look at them, if you can load them and look at them. Last time, I was talking about body cameras being crazy prices all over the place. Somebody give me answers. I asked the mayor directly in an email, "Could you please follow up and give me answers to those questions I asked from the podium?" Nothing. And in fact, when I said, you know, "You don't even comment about the fact that I'm afraid to call the police and I live in your city? I'm afraid to deal with Oviedo Police from the way that they have treated me when I've not, when I've asked for help and I've, for a year now, regretted almost, August 28th, when I first called about what I called about, it will be a year." And my case, number 20174001489, the officer who handled that case is Officer Joseph Meyer. I think he might have been picked, because when he first was called before Sergeant Rager assigned Meyer to the case, he knew that Officer Meyer had talked with the person that was harassing me with his body camera off. I think that this whole body camera issue is more than just pricing. I see Oviedo Police looking to their superiors that are training them to ask, "Should I keep this on right now, or is this a time when I turn it off?" I see it. I've seen it. I can show it to people in body cams. I see them asking, "Is this a turn-off moment? No, no, leave it on, because we know Helen Jones is watching us now, so we have to keep it on." And then we can just gouge the heck out of her to try to see if we can make her not do it. Because somebody on my street, not me and not my harasser, called the police as a witness to some harassment that he's witnessed against me by the person I've been having a problem with. And when I asked for the body cam video, I was told it would be four-hour preparation at $48 and change. I can't afford that. I should be able to see what a witness said about me to the police after a year of suffering at their carelessness. Anyway, please look at that case. Please help me bring it to the Inspector General for review, because even though I don't assume that somebody is guilty before they are tried in a court of law, Officer Meyer, in my mind, for the thing he is sitting in jail for, is right now innocent. Whether or not he is guilty is not for me to decide. It's not for a police officer, a chief of police, or anybody to decide. It is for a court of citizens to decide. And I have one more thing, and please forgive me, I've gone over. Mr. Groot said something at the last meeting that was very troubling to me, very upsetting to me, and I really hope that he misspoke. Because he said, and I can't quote it.
Ma'am.
I have it in my bag.
Ma'am.
He said, "Once you become a City Council member, once you become an elected official appointed to a board, you may not again be an advocate. You cannot advocate for people." I'm sorry. I don't think that he understands the meaning of advocate. I think he's talking about a legal council that's paid or... Thank you.
All righty. Anybody else would like to address City Council? Not on the lighting district, right? Okay.
Thank you. Melanie Thomas, 3550 Diamond Leaf Lane. Just a quick, just a question if, as a City Council and elected officials that represent also Seminole County, if you have any official stance on what's going on with Joel Greenberg right now and the comments that he made and what's been going on as a realtor, who has clients of all different faiths? I know you also are in the business as well. If you think that that's an appropriate way for an elected official to represent, you know, Seminole County? Just a concern to me, it's a little disturbing. I wonder if you had any official comment? Don't mean to pit you on the spot, but just wondering as fellow elected officials of the Oviedo and then Seminole County as well.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address City Council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting and move on to our consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda is made up of items number four through 13. What is the pleasure of Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have motion. Any second? Any discussion?
No, looks good, sir.
I'm, I was just excited to see that we're taking care of some of the roads by adding a new turn lane, restriping. We're fixing some of the problems from the hurricane in Little Creek and Live Oak. And I was a little troubled by the request for the staff, the temporary staff, because I feel like we're in a position right now where it's hard for us to hire good staff because of the salaries that we offer. But we'll get through this. And I'm glad to see that there was two grant applications in there as well.
Great. Anything else?
If I could bring up, just for everybody here, y'all know that I have been very eager since we acquired the Twin Rivers Golf Course to get a conservation easement on it, and it hasn't come to light until this consent agenda. But on here, there is a grant application that would put a good chunk of that into conservation. And the other thing I was hoping to do was potentially get us reimbursed some for about the $5.5 million that was spent to acquire that. But we've got a good shot at this, I think, and I appreciate staff. I think I brought it to them back in May to research, and we're just in the nick of time. It's got to be in by, I think, September 17. So we've got enough time, and I'm hopeful for us.
Terrific. Just so all the audience knows, when the Council purchased the golf course, one of the main goals was to obtain grants in order to reimburse us for the golf course. So the timing of it is very good, that this has become available to us. So we are excited about that. Anything else? Hearing none. Motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of adopting consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, I should also add that the golf course might be actually operating at breakeven this year, but there's more of that to come later on. So we'll hear about that in September. First public hearing is item number 14. Let me just catch up to that with everybody. Bear with me. It's ordinance number 1674. Mr. Groot, can you read that one by title only? This is amending Chapter 34 of our pensions and retirement for the Oviedo Police Officers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending Chapter 34, pensions and retirement, Article 2, relating to the Police Officer's Retirement Fund, amending Section 34-19 definitions, amending Section 34-21 Board of Trustees, amending Section 34-47, reemployment after retirement, adding Section 34-48 Deferred Retirement Option Plan, adding Section 34-49 Supplemental Benefit Component for Special Benefits, Chapter 185 Share Accounts, providing for codification as well as the correction of scrivener's errors, providing for severability and provisions, repealing all ordinances of conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to amend Sections 34-19 through Section 34-49 of the city's code ordinances to incorporate the Deferred Retirement Option Plan into the Police Officer Retirement Plan. Tonight, we are asking that the City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1674.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This is a public hearing. Surprise, surprise, I have no written request on this item. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address Council on it? Hearing none, we will close public comment and move on to the pleasure of Council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Henkin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance number 1674.
Second.
We have motion second. Councilman Henkin, anything?
No, sir. Looks fine.
Councilmember?
Looks good.
Were you my second?
We were tied.
Oh, were you both tied? Oh, yeah. For those who don't know, I am deaf in my right ear, so sometimes I do have a little trouble hearing who may have made the motion. Councilwoman, anything?
No. Looks great.
All righty. Councilman Britton?
Good.
Nope?
Good.
All righty. Hearing and seeing no discussion on this item, I will call the question. The motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going to just jump off of item 15 for a second, because I want to take care of item 16. It's a real quick first reading, and then we'll get back to what everybody is here for. Item number 16, first reading of ordinance number 1675, Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Mr. Groot?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, substantially and comprehensively repealing and replacing Chapter 20 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oviedo regarding civil emergencies and hereby adopting the City of Oviedo Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, providing for numerous administrative and organizational matters pertaining to emergency management, providing for legislative fines and intent, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for codification as well as the correction of scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to repeal Chapter 20 and replace it with the city's Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. The proposed ordinance will incorporate the plan and delineate a clear line of authority for disaster operations and management of the operations centers. Recommended tonight that you read the ordinance by title only and then schedule a public hearing for Monday, September 6, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Do a free sheet.
I'm sorry, Mayor. It's Thursday, September 6.
Yeah, Thursday, right?
Yes, sir.
September 6. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1675 on Thursday, September 6, 2018, at approximately 6:30 PM here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I heard it both came from my right that time. You guys can figure it out. Any discussion?
No.
Nope? Nope? All right. All those in, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, schedule a public hearing for Thursday, September 6, 6:30 PM on ordinance 1675. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now we'll backtrack. Go over to item number 15, which is Resolution Number 3588-18. Just want to make a couple of announcements before we start. We do have a lot of written requests this evening to speak. We really request that everybody try to keep their comments to three minutes. We'll have the shot clock running to help everybody kind of stay on track. The other item that I need to announce, and I'm going to have the city attorney explain this in just a moment, is that we are here this evening to only discuss the funding of the lighting district. The lighting district has been established, and it is law here in the city of Oviedo. So the only item for discussion is how we fund it this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Groot, so he can explain, and then we'll go from there.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, it's an if we fund it. How and if?
Sure. Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. I think it's important to recognize tonight that the Special Assessment District has been established. The ordinances have been enacted. Five times, this Council has voted to adopt and support the Willdane Report that was submitted. That report is now adopted as a matter of law. The Special Assessment District is created as a matter of law. The ordinances are codified. The concept of whether or not there's a special benefit or not is finalized. It is not subject to debate. That ordinance is codified. Thus, the only thing before the Council tonight, and which has been established in the first resolution, is the apportionment of the special assessment cost. That's the only thing that's before the Council tonight. Does that help, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood what we were here for. And I'll also add that every vote on this has been unanimous to this point, except for one. And there was one vote, it was four to one at the beginning, and Councilman Henkin was the one dissenting at that point in time. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the City Council to adopt a final rate resolution for the implementation of the proposed street lighting assessment for fiscal year 1819. The city has approximately 3,850 streetlights within public right-of-way. But unlike other utilities, which have a dedicated funding source, streetlights have been funded with various revenues within the city's general fund, and most recently, such as the local option gas tax. The associated costs for this include pole rental, fixture rental, maintenance, and electricity. The establishment of the streetlight assessment is to convert the streetlight to a utility, streetlight utility, to a special revenue fund with a dedicated funding source like our other utilities. It's also to expand the utility to public right-of-ways that don't have streetlights currently. And then thirdly, another goal is to upgrade the technology of the system. Section 197.3632 provides a process for the imposition and collection of a non-evilorm assessment, such as the streetlight assessment. And there are certain milestones that must be accomplished in order to achieve this. The first one is the establishment of the streetlight district. This was accomplished with the adoption of ordinance number 1667 in February 2018. Secondly, is to enter into interlocal agreements with the property appraiser and the tax collector. City Council adopted Resolution 3555 on April 16, 2018, approving the interlocal with the property appraiser, and then adopted 3556 on May 7, 2018, to approve the interlocal agreement with the tax collector. Thirdly, is to adopt a preliminary rate resolution. This was accomplished with the adoption of Resolution Number 3578 on July 16, 2018. Next is the adoption of a final rate resolution. That is what you're being asked tonight, is to adopt the final rate resolution with Resolution Number 3588-18. Lastly, is to transmit a tax roll to the tax collector. Now, part of your, part of the resolution tonight is the approval of the tax roll, and we must submit that tax roll by September 15 of this year. The city did contract with Willdan Financial Services to develop a non-evilorm assessment for streetlights in accordance with Section 197.3632.[1737.86] for streetlights in accordance with Section 197.3632. And the study divides properties into two categories, as residential and general purpose. The residential properties are comprised of single-family residential properties and multifamily properties with less than 10 dwelling units. General-purpose properties are non-residential properties, which are commercial, office, industrial, those types of properties, as well as multifamily properties with 10 dwelling units or more. The study developed a base equivalent benefit unit. You're going to hear that a lot. Equivalent benefit unit, or the acronym is known as EBU. And that's $78.13. Now, Willdan presented their findings and the six alternatives that were reviewed to city council at your June 25th work session. And thereat, the council gave direction to proceed with the recommended methodology, which is for residential properties to be assessed one EBU, which is $78.13, and for general properties to be assessed at one EBU for 0.26 acres of property with a maximum cap of 50 EBUs. Mr. Tara Hollis and Mr. Jeff McGarvey of Willdan are here tonight, and they have a presentation that they would like to present regarding the technical study. And, Mayor, when they're done, I'll need a few minutes to wrap everything up, but I'd like to have them come up and make their presentation, and then when they're, and then I'll then bring it back to me. Now, there's just a couple of statements that I need to make.
Sir, Mr. Cobb?
Good evening. My name is Tara Hollis. I'm with Willdan Financial Services. I'm a principal consultant in our Orlando office here. And I think Jeff McGarvey is also here. He's our managing principal for the Orlando office and a vice president within the firm.
Can you just pull the microphone up? Sorry.
Sure. And is there going to be a way that I can switch between slides, or is that?
Yeah, just, Eliana will take care of it.
Okay. All right, perfect.
Mr. Mayor, if I were, is this public, public comment, or is she limited? Is the time not going to run for her as well?
No, sir, it doesn't run for her. It all.
It doesn't run for her? She's special?
All right. Let's set some ground rules here, okay? Because I run a pretty tight ship. Everybody will, everybody will have their chance. We don't have people yelling out, speaking from the audience. We don't have clapping. We don't have hooting. We don't have hollering. We treat everybody with respect. We listen to everybody. And the procedures by statute are that the staff makes their presentation, which is what they're doing now, and then the public gets to have their public comment, period. I asked everybody to limit their public comments to three minutes because I have approximately 20 request-to-speak forms. And quite frankly, you, times 20, times 3, that's an hour. And we're going to get a lot of people repeating themselves. So we try to limit it to three minutes. If you go three and a half minutes, I'm not going to cut you off at three minutes if you're wrapping up your thought process. So that's how it works.
My question was, I thought we were in the public comment?
We're not there yet, sir.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get there.
I apologize.
All right. I do appreciate it. The staff is making their presentation. That's city manager background. That's what's happening currently. Continue.
Thank you.
And wait, I should add just one more thing. If we don't let them make their presentation, everybody has misconceptions about what this is, how it is, what it does. You need to understand what this is all about before you can get up here and make your public comments, because I think a lot of misinformation has been spread around out there, and you're all going to be a little surprised when we're done here tonight why this is happening, what it's going to do, how the rate will drop over time. So let's give this young lady a few time and explain it.
Thank you. Just in starting, special assessments, and there are certain case law requirements, and Mr. Group has already gone through those, but basically, the special assessment is a charge imposed against real property to pay for essential services. The program and the plan that we designed in our report is basically set up to be authorized by your home rule powers, so the city's home rule powers, and then following the requirements of Section 197.3632 of the Florida statutes. There are certain case law requirements that must be met. The first one of those is that in order to have a non-advalorem special assessment, you do have to have a special benefit to your property. And there are several special benefits that we have looked at here. They include that they're providing beautification to the properties, as well as better identification of parcels and properties, and enhanced safety to not only the property, but the persons living on that property. And then also enhanced safety throughout the community as you're traveling throughout the community. The components of the data, sorry, excuse me, the data components of the apportionment methodology, the first thing we have to look at and define is what's the benefit area. So we've sat down with staff, looked over the streetlights, where they're benefiting, the properties that are benefiting, and we have determined that the benefit area is really within the entire incorporated limits of the city. The second is to look at a level of service and what type of service is provided throughout the city. The city has, as you mentioned, over 3,800 streetlights throughout the city. And we're saying that it's basically in reviewing that, it's overall, the lighting that's coming from those is providing a consistent service throughout the city. There are some areas that we'll talk about that we're looking at adding additional lights, and that is what's part of this assessment, is there is a component in there to continue to add those additional lights so that we can continue to add, provide this level of service throughout the entire city limits. Next, we have to develop the revenue requirements. So you need to know how much needs to be generated and how much needs to be recovered from the assessment. So we looked at several things, and I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on those in a few minutes when I show you the budget and some of the items we looked at. But basically, we looked at what costs are associated with both major roads and major thoroughfares throughout the city, how you get around throughout the city, as well as cost of streetlights within the subdivisions. And then, again, you have to have a fair and reasonable apportionment of costs. So we developed an apportionment methodology, which we mentioned is setting an equivalent benefit unit. And an equivalent benefit unit, and here's what we're looking at, is a typical single-family residence. The final component to developing the assessment program is to develop the assessment role. We worked with both the property appraiser and with Seminole County to get the information, so parcel data, Department of Revenue codes, whether it was a vacant parcel, whether it was built upon, and to determine what all properties were within the city, which ones benefit from it, which again is all, basically all buildable properties in the city. So if it's a vacant parcel, we'll talk about that in a little bit. Right now, that is not receiving the full benefit. But we had to identify what type of property you had, puts you into the categories, and then, again, work with the tax collector, the property appraiser, to put together the final assessment role, which would be the next step, is to certify that assessment So the revenue requirements, we have to know what are your fiscal requirements, what needs to be recovered through the assessment program. In doing that, we actually looked at a test year, which we're calling fiscal year 2019, and then put together a five-year pro forma operating budget. So we start with the test year and look at your electricity costs, and there's lease costs associated with the pole rentals. There's also maintenance costs associated with it, and then some minor labor and equipment costs, which the city has to incur. There's also miscellaneous assessment expenditures. So to do this program, you obviously have to do our study. You had legal costs involved with getting this set up and passed. You have the assessment role maintenance, that has to happen on an annual basis. So it has to be updated annually. If there's any changes in properties, et cetera, that has to be updated, and so there is a minor cost with that. And then there's also collection costs that need to be developed, or that are associated with this. And those include, for example, putting together a reserve for early payment of your taxes. If you pay early, there's obviously a discount that you're going to get, and the city has to make sure that they're recovering enough funds. The tax collector does charge you to collect the money and transmit it to the city. So there's some minor collection costs associated. Then, we also want to look at whether any credits. The FDOT does reimburse the city. There's about $37,000, $38,000 a year that they reimburse the city towards the payment for the electricity, et cetera. So we do want to, we do back that back off. And then, any capital costs. So we've mentioned, we've put together an initial budget, and then we're also looking at potentially putting aside another $200,000 a year to help light, basically, the dark areas, continue to light that, as well as start a conversion process to possibly, you know, better lights, more green-friendly lights, and working with both Duke and FPL in that process. This one's pretty small. I don't, this is, this is the five-year budget. So as I mentioned, we start with the test year, all those requirements that we talked about, the actual electricity costs, et cetera, all those develop the budget, how much has to be recovered. This is before we put together the $200,000 in capital costs. So before you do that, just to operate the system as it is now, you're at about $900,000 a year. Again, we looked at a five-year and then took an average of the five-year also to show you what that budget would be. But we went line item by line item, escalated costs, looked at your historic costs, as well as projected future costs, made adjustments for inflation, et cetera, to make sure that the assessment is going to recover what is needed to operate the system. The apportionment methodology, and we did look at six alternatives, which we'll show you, but the basic apportionment methodology is to develop an equivalent benefit unit. Again, I mentioned that was equated to what a typical single-family average, single-family residence would be. And then, we allocate and look at that and look at the general service properties in comparison to a typical single-family residence, and assign equivalent benefit units to those general service properties. The rate classes, and this was already discussed, but the basic rate classes are residential and general service, and then the vacant parcels. The six alternatives that we looked at, basically looked at how we assign the benefit units, and then how we assign them, whether it was one EBU per parcel. We also looked at what a typical single-family residence building size, so their building square footage was. We also looked at what their typical, we looked at all single-family, all that were coded as single-family residence, what their average lot size was. And then, four and five are kind of taken off of what two and three were, same method, but assigning one EBU for all residential parcels. And then, another alternative that we were asked to look at was what happens if you do this through an advalorem method? Basically, the, the option and the alternative that was selected at the last meeting was to look at Alternative 5, which is every residential parcel is one equivalent benefit unit, and then all general service parcels are one equivalent benefit unit, point two, per .26 acres of their GIS parcel size, so their land size. And again, that is capped at 50 EBUs. We're looking as, as the parcel gets larger, especially when you're in those general service parcels, there's some out parcel, some conservation areas, et cetera, that the full, full benefit starts to get diminishing returns and diminishing benefit as the lot size is getting larger. In doing this, we can see that there, here's where we come up with the $78.13. We took what the budget was, what the projected budget was for 2019, and all the costs associated with that, as well as the $200,000 for some of the capital expenditures, divided that by the total number of equivalent benefit units that were developed based on all of the information from the property appraiser, and then came up with what would be the amount per equivalent benefit unit, which results in $78.13 for fiscal year 2019 per equivalent benefit unit. This method recognizes that residential units are generally homogeneous and receive similar benefits from the street lighting. And it also eliminates some disparity in assessment rates for single-family parcels throughout the city. Again, I mentioned, this is on the next slide, that when you look at an advalorem method, when it's based on your taxable value of your property, you could have two homes right next to each other, a pole right between the two homes, a streetlight pole, but based on different home set exemptions, et cetera, that the value of one home is significantly less because of different require, or different benefits that they've received from, tax benefits they've received from either being there a long time, home set exemption, save our homes versus another home that may have just sold recently. You could have a streetlight, doing it this way, a streetlight rate of 40, one home paying $40, the home next door paying $120, still with that same pole right between them. They're both getting a very similar benefit, basically the same benefit, but paying a totally different cost. This just happens to be, we picked Lake Rogers Circle just to show, you can see the variability in what the assessments would be if we based it on that method. So that's why we're saying, really, Alternative 5 is giving you, especially for those single-family properties, it's matching the benefit and the cost.
All right. So just to explain this slide from last time, because we've seen all this since February, voted on it five times, workshops, just explain that slide to everybody in the audience as an advalorem, what would happen? And that is the Lake Rogers neighborhood, right behind City Hall.
Yes. So this is all the homes, 65 homes that are on Lake Rogers Circle. Basically, took the information from the property appraiser's office and pulled what their taxable value is, then assigned, assigned the cost based on, assigned the assessment based on what their taxable value of the parcel is. And you can see, again, some more streetlights throughout the entire street. Every assessment would be different based on the value of the property. So again, that's Lake Rogers Circle. They're all getting a very, you know, they're all getting a similar benefit, but if you base it on a millage rate, you're looking at 65 different assessments for the same service, for the same benefit. Since our last meeting, we did have something come up with a special case that we were asked to look at. And there are, it was brought to our attention that there are some gated communities that have and pay for their own streetlights. So we looked at developing what would be a credit for those, depending on the extent that they're paying for those streetlights. So we have developed this credit as a potential credit for them. We looked at how much of the, how much of the costs are really going towards the streetlights within the subdivisions versus how much of the costs are going for the major thoroughfare lights. And in doing that, if we looked at giving those properties that credit, there's 1,501 parcels, of which 126 of those are vacant. So there's about 1,375 parcels that this would impact, single-family residential parcels. With that credit, they would, their rate would go from $78.13 down to $34.38.
And just explain that again for everybody, because in the gated neighborhoods.
Yes.
The city is not responsible for their lights.
Yes.
They pay for their lights in their higher assessments.
Yes.
And if they want to upgrade their poles, change their poles, it's their responsibility, just like the roads and the sidewalks, because they're behind the gate.
Yes. So that's paid potentially through their HOA fees.
Thank you.
And then this final was gone through, but this is basically the requirements of 197.3632 of the Florida statutes, and I'm just showing which of the different things have been done so far. And really, tonight, we're to adopting the final resolution, the final rate. And then the next step, once that's done, is to put together the final certified assessment role that would go to the tax collector and the property appraiser, so that it would go on the final tax bill.
Anything else? Anything else?
No, thank you.
Mr. Cobb, you want us to turn it back over to you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Resolution Number 38, 3588-18, what it does is it ratifies the findings of Resolution 3578-18, which was your preliminary rate resolution. It approves the streetlight assessment role. It levies and imposes the initial streetlight assessment in the amount of $78.13 per equivalent benefit unit for each tax parcel in the assessment role, and it defines the method of collection. It is recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 3588-18. Now, one thing I want to tell you is that the current version of the resolution does not include the private neighborhood credit. If you wish to include that in the program, then what we would ask is that, as part of your motion, is that you give us direction to incorporate the credit into the final rate resolution. So that is something that we will need you to do if you desire to include the private neighborhood credit as part of the initial rate resolution. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. All righty. So now that we all have all that information, we will open up the public comment portion of the meeting. Now, I see many new faces here this evening, so I'll just kind of give everybody a little rundown of how it works. Comma, when I call your name, you, we, well, let me back it up. We do the written request first. The written requests are given to me in no particular order, other than the order that they were handed in to the clerk. So that's how the order is determined. When we call your name, come on up to the podium, we need your name and address for the record. As I said, we'd like to try to keep everybody to three minutes, because I did count them, there's 16 written requests, and I'm sure there's going to be many other people in the audience who are going to want to address counsel on this issue, even though they didn't put in a written request. And I will give everybody that opportunity when we're done going through the written request. The one thing that needs to be done, as I mentioned earlier, is decorum. We talk about the issue, and we address it to the whole entire body on the council, not at any one individual on the council. So with all that being said, our first written request comes from a Mr. Gordon Luther.
Gordon Luther, I live in Cambridge West. I'm opposed to the assessment. We have streetlights. The homeowners pay the electric bill, and therefore, I don't like paying for assets twice. I've already paid for my streetlights. I'm paying for my lighting and maintenance, and I don't think it's fair to have to pay it again. And as far as the argument that it raises my property values, that just means higher property taxes, so I'm not in favor of that. I bought my house to live in, not as an investment. I made my speech. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next written request I have is from Angela Albeiz.
Always.
Oh, thank you.
Let's just name and address for the record.
Just name and address for the record.
Angela Albeiz, we live in the Sanctuary subdivision. When we received the letter, it was quite a shock. We are definitely opposed to the assessment. The one thing that I could never get anyone at the city to tell me is, at first, the letter does not say that everyone is being taxed. So I was trying to figure out why I had to pay for all my neighbors. Then, we just did a brief study on the street, found out that some people did not get a letter. So that told me that, yes, even though I have a light on my property, that I was supposed to be paying for everybody to enjoy that streetlight that we don't really care about one way or the other. So if it could be removed, that would be fine, too. I'm okay with that.
Everybody is paying, as you just said.
Okay. And then I also was just doing an analysis of the cost. In my initial letter, it says $1.1 million. If you divide that by $78.13, it comes to 15,000 homes, or 14, I rounded it up. So therefore, if that's the case, then not everyone is being taxed. So I would like to know what the actual amount of residents are, as well as what the overall total is going to be.
We'll get that answered for you. Mr. Cop, do you want to just jump in before we go forward? I mean, we have 12,500 homes in the city of Oviedo approximately, and the rest of it's made up by commercial parcels.
That's the one thing about it, Mayor, is that because we do the commercial and ops industrial brought into it as well, that does fall into, as far as just taking, dividing it by the EBU. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, from the state-of-the-city slides, I seem to remember 12,500.
It's in that, between 12,000 and 13,000 individual homes.
Do you only have 12,000 homes in the city of Oviedo?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, we're answering your question. Yes, ma'am. That's about all there is. Just so everybody knows, there's 12,000 homes and 1,400 apartments. That's all there is in the city of Oviedo. Everybody thinks it's tens of thousands, I know. Apartments. All righty, our next written request comes from Joanne Beck. How are you tonight, Joanne?
I'm good. And yourself?
I'm doing great. Just name and address for the record, please.
My name's Joanne Beck, I live in Alafera Woods. I also am on property in another subdivision of Oviedo Gardens. And I'm here to request that you consider the special case for residential parcel located in gated communities to accept that credit into the resolution, because as the city has done a very good job and very clear, and they've done their due diligence on the study that they've received from the Wildom organization here. And according to the study, which you've already adopted into the ordinance and to the law for previous comments, the study has the assessment methodology, which has already been established for the special benefits, but it also states underneath the parcel apportionment that each assessed parcel must receive a special benefit that equals or exceeds the amount of the special assessment actually imposed on the parcel. And because the city does not pay the utility bills in private gated communities or the capital expenses for that equipment, then I am requesting that the special case be put into the resolution and that the credits be given to the gated communities. And that's only for the level of service, and it's fair and reasonable, as what Ms. Hollis had stated about the streetlight assessments being to recover the cost of the major roads and the subdivisions proportionately, and I'm asking for that to happen. Also, the amendment, the memorandum that was given to the city regarding the special case circumstances from the Wildom Financial Services explicitly states within it that within the city, there are approximately 1,501 residential parcels located within gated communities. To the extent that these residential parcels pay for a portion of their street lighting, local subdivision lights through an alternative method, the parcels would receive a credit of .56 EBUs per parcel to account for the costs associated with local subdivision street lighting that are being paid through alternate methods. Based on the current proposed assessment of $78.13 for fiscal year 2019, those resident parcels are eligible for gated community credit would be assessed at 34, 38 for fiscal year, fiscal year 2019, as detailed in the schedule that's been presented. So I'm requestfully, you know, respectfully requesting that this be, you know, put into the resolution for the special circumstances, for the special cases.
Thank you. And as you heard earlier, that was an oversight as they were going through it, but they did catch it before we got here tonight.
And also, something else to consider as you're doing for the capital expenses and the capital costs, is maybe you advance some of the new technologies into the street lighting with Duke Energy, for example, as we charge cell phones on regular, everyday occurrences to maybe incorporate the technology of putting in charging systems into the electric streetlight poles for cars in that circumstance, because that currently exists.
I would love that. I have an electric car outside. Thank you, ma'am. Next written request I have, and forgive me, it looks like it's Kurt Amesbury? All righty, sir.
I want to apologize if my...
No, sir. Sir, there's many new faces here, and honestly, it all is good. I'd just like to explain everything to everybody, and we're going to give everybody their chance.
Kurt Amesbury, Shady Oak Point. The Oviedo City Council has proposed a new tax to cover operating, maintenance, upgrade, and expansions of the lighting system. To begin with, expansions of the lighting system should be paid for by the associated new construction, that is, through impact fees. Taxpayers see no benefit from expanded systems. You're asking taxpayers to pay somebody else's lighting bills. Upgrades should be cost-neutral or cost-savings, as they should be funded probably through bonds, and the bonds retired through the savings. If it's not cheaper in the long run, we shouldn't be doing it. Operation and maintenance has been paid for in our general fund, and should continue to be paid that way if it's necessary. But we should also take a look at why we even need the lighting. Mrs. Ray, as mentioned, turn off my light. I have the same feeling. I know there's a common perception that the lights are tied to safety. I have a whole raft of reports that say, that give information to the contrary. There is no safety benefit to the lightings, so there's no common benefit. The only benefit that does accrue in something like installing new lighting is priding community. People take a greater interest in their community, it's a social observation, and so they've observed that while nighttime crime doesn't change, daytime crime sometimes does go down. But I can think of a lot of other ways that you could invest a million dollars that would be good for the community. As far as the EBUs are concerned, you mentioned, I've forgotten the lady's name, but Alternative Five, which showed that graph with the wide range of values, unless I misunderstood that, that basically shows a three-to-one cost to benefit for the houses. In other words, some houses would pay three times as much for the same benefit.
That's if it was an ad valorem tax?
If it's an ad valorem, that's correct, I understand.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Under the proposal that you have, since a 10-unit building would be billed the same as a single-unit building, you're seeing a 10-to-1 difference in payment. In other words, some people would pay 10 times less than what I would pay as a single homeowner, and so I would say that that's even more inequitable than the proposal number five. So I think it's irresponsible, frankly, to spend a million, million dollars on lighting when really no benefit has been shown for it, and certainly, I don't think we have that much taxpayer money just sloshing around in the budget. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All righty, next written request I have comes from Mary Ann O'Brien. Good evening. Name and address for the record.
It's Mary Ann O'Brien. I live at 1013 Willa Lake Circle.
You can pull it down, it's easy.
Willa Lake Circle in Oviedo, Florida. I am here today because I oppose the special tax lighting district. I'm against the assessment. I feel the video would have been nice to see probably five years ago, before we had the construction, the commercial construction, the road widening, the roads that we cannot get around in the city. That would have been a good video to see five years ago or more. I feel the tax bills will continue to go up. I got mine yesterday, and guess what? It went up. There's other items in the city. After I reviewed the budget, I did a little investigating. Our budget last year was in a deficit for the tax lighting district of, it was only $212,000. The year before, it was $789,000. The year before that, it was $765,000. The year before that, it was $833,000. Why was it reduced to 200,000?
Because money was taken out of gas tax and sales tax that should have been used for repaving roads.
I did a little bit more investigating. I found there's new items in the budget that weren't, I guess, I was aware of. Couple items missing were monies from nearby medical centers. They pay no taxes. That's our hospital. They've been given a ride, a free ride, for a number of years, and I'm not quite sure why. They're a profit-making hospital. And number two is the Twin Rivers Golf Course. I play golf, and I don't play there. I can't afford to play there. The fees are high, there's no free, there's no discounts for residents, and I feel that it's something we didn't need, we don't have a budget to maintain, and possibly, we look at selling. Also, the hospital needs to be addressed, because that's tax money we're not getting. Again, if somebody wants to review that, it's in the budget. I reviewed $485,000 tax breaks that were given to the hospital. I also reviewed $5 million for the golf course. $260,000 is your mark to maintain it. This is, if you start combining all the budgeted items for the golf course, you're looking at 25% of our entire budget. Please, somebody review our budget. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
I'll clarify a few things. The hospital is not getting a free ride, the hospital is paying incremental taxes over five years. So the hospital paid taxes last year, pays more taxes this year, more taxes this year, more taxes the next, and by the fifth year, the hospital will be paying its full share of taxes. When the City Council was approached by the hospital, we were competing with eight other regions in the state for HCA to build a hospital. Folks wanted a hospital, so rather than us writing them a check, we gave them increment tax financing, so they pay, I don't know, it's 20%, 30%, 40%, over five years, it goes up to 100%. Golf course does not come out of general funds. Golf course, as I mentioned earlier, generates its own money and is paid for out of stormwater funds, because the golf course is actually a stormwater holding pond, and there's other plans for that later on, so, just for clarity. And I do appreciate the speaker bringing those points to our attention, because it's very important, that's some of the misinformation that's out there. Next is Philip Gold.
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that citizens get a 15% discount on the golf.
Oh, and Councilman Britton just told me that citizens, because he is the major golfer of us, get a what?
15% discount.
15% discount, if you let them know that you're a citizen of the city and show your ID. Philip?
They do give us a discount, if you ask.
Thank you, Philip, for clarifying that.
Philip Gold, 2600 Doubletree Place, and I live in Live Oak Reserve. I'm not against lighting.
I'd never have guessed by the shirt.
You never guessed? I'm actually in favor of the lighting district, because I like new technology.
Well, Phil, why didn't you check you were for it?
Oh, I never checked.
I'll check it.
For or against?
There's one in the pile.
And the reason, the reason for that is, I like new technology. I have, in our own development, being on the board, saved us thousands of dollars by improving our lighting in our buildings in various places, and we've had to put more lights in just for safety, even though, I'm pro and con on this safety business. My thing is, new lighting should always shine down, no reason to light the sky, we still want our children to grow up and believe that there are stars up there that we can My question on this is, okay, I look at this as a budget item, you have a lighting district that you're adding to the budget, what are you doing with the general budget? Are you taking it away from that?
We'll get into that discussion later on.
Okay, because that was what my question was on this, looking at it that way, I'm trying, I'm looking at my notes. Oh, one other thing is, how do you put the city into this budget? In other words, there are light, there's streetlights that are on city property, not related to homes. So, does that make sense?
Do you mean like the Long Mitchell Hammock Road, Phil?
Yeah.
Yeah, those will be upgraded, updated, but that's the, as was explained earlier, that's the benefit for all, you know, the, around the city.
Okay, I missed how that would be.
No, it's no problem.
All right, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Next written request I have is Aleem Sator. Did I get that, did I kill it?
That's fine.
No, I feel bad, because people kill for San Pierre all the time. How is it pronounced, sir?
Oops.
And is it doctor?
No, no, I'm not a doctor. Housekeeping. Can anyone, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
My name is Aleem Sator, 556 Prospect Point. I'm against the ordinance for the lighting fund. I hear a young lady speak about upgrading the street lighting, but she not mentioning any of the green friendly lights? Is it, did you guys look into solar lights? I mean, that's...
There's all different technologies. What we learned just recently was a conference, then there was a booth there that had all different types of lighting, and the issue with the solar lighting right now, it's not reliable enough to put out on the main road. Solar lighting is great in parks, you know, places like City Hall, lower lit areas, to try to use solar up and down a major highway right now, the technology isn't quite there.
Okay.
But if it is in the future, of course, this will enable us to do things like that.
Okay, I think it's going to be a little more practical, too. You said about the tax collector, you have to pay the tax collector to collect the money. Why don't we just pay the money directly to the city and save money also? And the young lady mentioned about renting the poles, why don't we just buy the poles, so we don't have to pay that maintenance fee?
The, our franchise agreements right now say otherwise, but we can talk about all that later on.
All right, well, appreciate it, thanks.
You're welcome. Next written request I have comes from Deborah Ridgway. Did I get that right?
Yes, thank you.
Deborah Ridgway, 1069 Burnett Street. I just brought my Duke Energy bill, and I am, and in that bill is a municipal franchise fee, which varies every month. I'm already paying for lighting.
We'll discuss that in a little bit as well.
All right. Okay, I also have, I go walking, I've been here for 30 years, I've lived in Oviedo for 30 years. I've enjoyed my time here, I walk every night, and in my community, I find sufficient lighting everywhere. None of the poles are in disarray, the lighting is totally sufficient. I do have a light perpendicular to my house, and I also have lighting on my house. I feel like this is an un... I feel like this is an undue stress on the residents that they really do not need to incur. The prior meeting that I attended, Councilwoman Henkin made the comment that we need to get lights on Mitchell Hammock. Why is it so particular, Councilwoman Henkin, that you want lighting on Mitchell Hammock? Why is that the first priority? Could it be maybe that that's the new downtown that we all, that you guys want to tote? That you want to wave your council flag over and at our cost? That we, that we get the burden of that? Why shouldn't those people be paying for their lighting and those businesses that are there? Why are we being burdened with that? Don't forget, we're residents, but we're also voters. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, ma'am. Commercial, no outburst. Commercial businesses are paying their share of this EBU, as you saw in the presentation. Mitchell Hammock Road was only used as an example because through the side fields, in particular, there is no lighting, and there are many accidents that occur down there. Also, North Lockwood has been brought up. Upgraded lighting along 426 and 419 when the road is improved, and upgraded lighting in the older part of the city as well, where they don't have as many lights because they have Cobra heads. So, it's a little bit more than just Mitchell Hammock. Next written request is Amir Gergis. Hope I got that right. I tried. All righty, there we go.
Amir Gergis.
Name and address for the record, please.
Amir Gergis, 1077 Geneva Drive, Oviedo, Florida. I'm here to oppose the extra taxes over my family. We're a big family of seven and a fixed income, and this is going to be a burden over us, and we have enough lights. I feel like it's something we don't need. Also, the letter we got was like long after the decision was made. I feel like we needed to be involved from the beginning, and thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next written request is Mr. Scott Dunlap.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and appreciate your hearing us out on this stuff.
Of course, sir.
Scott Dunlap, 773 Law Order Drive. By the way, the ear thing never works for me, just saying, the deaf ear.
Oh.
Never works. Okay. First thing, I'd like to call your attention to a quote.
It is a deaf ear, and my wife will argue differently with you.
So, you don't get away with the high-frequency thing.
Yeah, I don't get away with it at home as much as I can here.
I call your attention to a quote from the 6th August minutes, and it says specifically, "Special assessments need not be based on Chapter 170 or any statutory law." We found that odd because that's not what the law says, but it goes on to say, "The only thing you look at is whether or not it's prohibited by state law," and this is clearly not prohibited. Hold that thought. The matter before council denied the advisability of the assessment. I think it's still relevant. We already pay about $800,000 for the existing inventory of streetlights within the current franchise agreements. That was briefed. There's about 4.5 million in fees and taxes that come in via the municipal taxes, municipal fees that comes into the city on the utility, on our utility bills. We're being assessed an additional $1.1 million on top of the $800,000 we've already been paying. We're not being abated that current cost, at least as of the last thing we heard. Therefore, for us, the taxpayer, we're going to continue paying the $800,000 plus the $1.1 million for a grand total of $1.9 million for something that is essentially the same. That's a 138% increase in cost. Just looking at Duke estimates, the recurring cost for LED conversion goes up 37% from $575,000 to $785,000. That includes a 41% reduction in electricity cost. That, the cost driver is the recurring rental cost of the LED posts. That single item accounts for 96% of that increase. That's going to be part, something we're going to pay on that franchise agreement for the next 12 years until we have a chance to renegotiate the franchise agreement. And when you do the math on this, if Duke alone costs $785,000 by the estimates we've seen, the other conversion cost would be at least $300,000. You're already at $1.1 million, and we haven't added a single light pole. These are recurring costs. They can go up without limit until these new franchise agreements are negotiated. LED conversion and new light installation should be a choice by impacted homeowners and HOAs, as it is pretty much anywhere else we've seen special lighting assessments in districts being put in place. If things break today, the pole wears out, you can get it fixed under the current franchise agreement at not, at no additional cost. The assessment, we don't, I don't think, my wife don't think, reasonably portioned. I mean, regardless of what's been legislated so far on benefits, and we disagree with that, but we appreciate you taking a look at it. The existing, if you have an existing light, you don't get special benefits under the proposed assessment because we've already paid for it, number one, and LEDs don't improve what you have one bit, and factors contrary evidence that says it might not. It actually could be brighter, cause sleep issues, any number of issues, and it actually could become a road hazard because of the increased glare. So, even if you think it's legal, if the taxpayers without lights today are going to end up paying for this stuff for at least a year or two before they get the lights. It's still okay, I guess, under law to do that, but it doesn't sound very fair to those folks who are going to be paying but not having. And the benefits that we talk about on Mitchell Hammock and Lockwood, those accrue not only to the citizens of Oviedo, but to thousands of people who push through here every day commuting through the town. They're never going to pay any part of that. We're going to be paying it for them. The only measurable benefits we see are to the utility company revenue line and the city budget because we're restoring $800,000 back to the general fund, if that is still true. So, what's transpired to date may be legal for where we are, but it doesn't really make a lot of sense for the homeowner and taxpayer perspective. And my recommendation would be that, at a minimum, the council consider reducing the assessment by the $800,000 that's already in the base budget and rebating that back or abating that back to the taxpayers. And Arkansas math puts that at about a $57 reduction, putting it net at about $21. And if you step back and abstract, you're saying, we're going to be accepting a 138% increase in the cost, 37% cost increase to LED, and accept that the benefits that have been asserted are real because it's been legislated. And if that's the case, and you go back to what I said in the beginning, if the only thing we're looking at is if something's legal, we need to start looking at it from a pure business case perspective, and does it make sense financially? And is it, what is intended for the benefit of the taxpayer? Thank you, Mayor, and Council.
Thank you. Next written request I have is from Peggy Wooden.
My name is Peggy Wooden, 1270 Lake Rogers Circle. In my opinion, you people put a lot of things over on us. A case in point is, you don't know how angry your citizens are about that postage stamp lake and park over there and the tons of apartment buildings. We are angry about that, and this is another thing you're trying to put over on us, and this is just a piece of garbage, and you need to cut it out because your people are angry. That's enough.
Yes, ma'am. Next written request is from Walter Benson.
My name is Walter Benson. I live at 571 Horseman Drive in Kingsbridge East. I've been here in the area for about 19 years. The growth is, to me, is crazy right now. It's gone from a little bedroom community to a metropolitan area now. One thing, the first gentleman that got up made a comment on, I pay an association fee. I already pay for my lighting, and it's quite adequate.
Not, not in Kingsbridge. Not in Kingsbridge.
My association fee, I get my bill every year, and their budget puts down for electricity.
Not for the streetlights, sir. Not, not in Kingsbridge.
For electricity being used in my subdivisions, I could assume it's going to be part of the lighting.
Not for the streetlights, sir. It's for the other things in the community, but not for the streetlights.
Another thing is, LEDs are quite bright, and if you notice, most subdivisions have the amber lights because I don't want to go out there at night and look like it's daytime. And those LEDs are quite bright, and they're, like the gentleman said, are very expensive to keep. Another thing, if this all comes into effect, I noticed on the thing that was given to us in the mail that it's going to be put in a separate fund, only used for that specific purpose. Are we going to get at the end of the year a statement saying what was collected, what was given out, and how much money is still in there now? And I honestly believe that once a tax of any sort is implied, it's going to be there forever, and every year, it's going to go up. So, right now, my association fee goes up, this fee goes up. It's just something else that we get every, you know, it's bad enough, it's hot enough to keep a house these days. But every time, to me, LED, my lighting, I've been here 19 years in that subdivision, never crime, no break-ins, the police have done a wonderful job here, and all of a sudden, they're saying, well, we need better, what's, it's worked for 19 years. Why all of a sudden do we need this better lighting? I don't, you know, it doesn't make any sense to me. And like I say, it's just every time you turn around, there's something added to. And the thing I'm more worried about is that it's going to escalate. And then, once it starts at the 78, the town gets larger, it gets bigger, whatever, then it goes up, and it goes up, and I know it is. I've been around long enough to know that once it's, and you're never going to get rid of the tax. It's going to be, the addendum is going to be here forever. You know, and that's what I'm looking at, is that, is it temporary, or is it something we're going to see every year now?
It'll be every year.
Every year, okay. So, it's like anything else, death in taxes. Thank you.
We could just raise the millage, but we'll talk about that later. Last written request I have is Joseph Cameron.
I stay in the Kingsbridge West Subdivision. When I first got this letter about this fee assessment, I was kind of upset. I'm still upset about it because the lights that we have work perfectly. So, it's, to me, I feel like this is more to it than meets the eye. But what is the purpose of this hearing?
I'm sorry, sir.
What's the purpose of this hearing?
For the city council to set the fee.
Okay. Are we going to vote on this?
The five of us sitting up here, eventually, we'll get to that. Yes, sir.
No, I'm talking about, are we going to vote on this?
Address the council, sir, and there will be no vote of the citizens on this. No, the council can raise the millage, they can.
Because, well, that's the indication that I got by this briefing that we received earlier, that this is a done deal. And we're just getting, we're getting information that said, this is what we're going to do. And we, and it seemed like we should have got something that said, this is what we're planning on doing, do you want to vote on it?
We've been talking about this since February. This isn't.
Well, I didn't know until I received this. I didn't know about it until I received.
Sir, I'm going to let you speak, but everybody else? I told you, we have strict rules. There'll be silence, the man will speak, I'll try to answer everyone's questions who speak as generally as I can because I can't speak for the whole body, but we're going to remain silent while the man speaks.
Yeah, I didn't know about it until I received this information in the mail, and it really is kind of upsetting because I've never heard of a fee assessment for lights, you know.
I have a tax bill here, I'll show you where there's one, but I think that, once we have time to discuss, I think a lot of things will come into focus.
All right, but is this a done deal already?
I can't speak for the council, sir. We'll know in about an hour or so, whenever we can get the vote.
Okay. Well, I hope we do vote on this.
Yes, sir, we will.
All right.
That's the purpose of tonight. That is the end of the written request. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address council? Let's try not to be redundant, please.
I'll try not to be, Dominic. My name is Daniel Ballantyne. I live in Live Oak Reserve. I'd like to commend the gentleman in the pinstripe suit as a CPA. I appreciated the numbers.
Oh, that's right, that was your past career.
It's my past career, sort of current, but I like to, I've heard the expenses you guys mentioned, $1.1 million, but you never spoke about the cost savings. And as someone who's upgraded all his LED, all his incandescent lights to LED, I noticed that I'm getting a 93% savings in electricity. Instead of having a one-year life, I'm getting a 20-year life. So, net-net, I saved, I made up the cost in one year. So, in layman's terms, I would think that if you're going to propose such a thing, that it would net-net save the city money and thus not cost us any additional money.
Over time, that is probably what will happen, but until they're actually.
But then you said to the gentleman prior that this is, or two times, the gentleman in the light blue, that this is going to go on indefinitely.
I said the fee will go on indefinitely. The fee, in theory, will drop over time, and we'll talk about that during our discussions.
So, that's why I think if, you know, I don't mind improving our infrastructure to LED, to technology, as Mr. Gold mentioned, who's also in my Live Oak Reserve, but if it does, it should save us money, like when you're running a business, and the city council should be run like a business.
Yeah.
The other thing is, like a lot of people, I don't want to see it in my actual village. I think we are well, we are well-lit. I have 17 light bulbs on my house and so am I for the neighbors, and we don't want to have strong LED lights blaring into our home. I don't mind the major causeways and commercial roads, but then again, it should be a cost savings to the taxpayers, not a cost expense.
We'll explain all that in just a little bit.
Okay. Final thing, I noticed that the light bulbs in Live Oak Reserve, they are not on the common, what do you call it? They're actually on our private property. Is that included in this?
No, they would be in the easements.
They're not in the easements. So, the light bulb in my neighbor's across from me, it's on his, it's on his lawn.
There's actually probably an easement on his surface.
It's on his, okay, so it goes in, okay.
Yeah, lights are always on in easements.
So, you propose that this will all go in our, these LED lights will be in our villages, in our private streets as well?
We will talk about that as a council in just a little.
Because I don't, like many others, I don't find any safety. I find better safety, the lights that I have, the LED lights that I have on my own private property in camera, at my, my cost that I chose. And since Oviedo is the safest city in central Florida, which I looked up, I don't see any benefit for crime or anything that other people mentioned.
We'll get into discussions, and I think a lot of this will come into clarity.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Who would like to go next in the back? Yes, ma'am. How are you, Judy?
Judy Gracie, Foxfire Trail. I just have a simple question. I've lived there for 46 years. There are only 10 homes. We've never had streetlights. We really don't want streetlights. Can we be put into the same category as the gated community people and get a discount on this $78 thing?
I don't think you're a private road anymore.
No, we're not, but, so all the gated communities are private roads?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're never going to have streetlights on our road?
Well, you may, but.
But we don't, we don't want them.
That'll be a debate later on, Judy. Foxfire Trail became a public street 10 years ago, 12 years ago?
No, long, longer than that.
Long time ago, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Long time ago. We've been in the city for a long, long time.
And we got it repaved.
Thank you, Steve. He was our big proponent. So, you're unequivocally saying that we would be not included in the discount.
You're not a gated.
Area. That would be, well, no, we're not a gated community.
No, yeah, not private streets. Just to clarify again, the folks who live behind a gate pay for everything behind the gate. They pay for their roads, they pay for their sidewalks, their curbs, their lights, the electricity. So everyone who's behind a gate would get the discount because they're behind the gate, but they also wouldn't be included in any upgrades that the city does, because they're behind the gate.
So if we put a little gate at the beginning of the road?
Judy, if you would like a gate and take over the maintenance of the roads and the sidewalks and...
We have no sidewalks.
All the stormwater, I'm sure Mr. Wyatt could whip that agreement right up for you.
We have no sidewalks, this is the second year our stormwater has completely flooded everything that it's never flooded before in 50 years.
Yeah, it's wet all over the place. We're having 46 inches of rain, is that what you sent out, Bobby? 41 inches of rain, twice the amount of rain.
Yeah. And, you know, nothing is really maintained out there.
My neighborhood, the dry pond, has ducks in it right now.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We understand.
Okay.
All righty. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Anybody else, yes, sir, in the back? Just name and address for the record.
My name is Khalid Albaz, I live in the sanctuary. I just have a question. The neighbor to my left didn't get the letter, to my right didn't get the letter, across the street didn't get the letter. So I know they're not going to get taxed like I'm going to get taxed for this. So, not every resident...
Sir, whether they saw their letter or not, whether they saw the letter or not, I, letters went out to everybody, but everybody's going to pay. Doesn't matter.
So, my neighbor, everyone will pay?
Yes, sir.
Everyone that, even if the pole is not on their property?
Yes, sir. Everybody's going to pay.
Okay. Good to know, because I asked, they didn't have the letter, they did not get it, and that's four neighbors, so...
Yeah, that's unusual. But, yes, sir, everybody will pay.
Next question, is this an emergency issue that you need to go through and apply right now, or is this something that we would like, it's nice, it's an enhancement, therefore the citizen of Oviedo should fault on it?
We'll talk about all of that when we're in our discussions.
Okay.
It'll, clarity will, it'll all be clear whether you all agree with it or not, by the time we're done, you'll have all the information.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to address the audience, address the council, pardon me, from the audience? Yes, sir. I'll go to that gentleman first, yes, sir, and then we'll go to the young lady standing by the picture.
My name is Bernie Blackwood, I live at 381 Maple Court. The letter that you sent out said that the EBUs were calculated in a manner that was fair to all the property owners. I have a question about the EBUs that are assessed of special purpose properties. Seems like they always catch the brunt of everything.
I didn't understand the question on special purpose properties.
Yes. Is that what you call commercial properties, offices in that special purpose?
Yes, special purpose property, yes, sir. They'd be commercial, industrial, properties that aren't residential, yes, sir.
Yeah. Well, they provide their own lights on the property they're required to for safety and other reasons. And that type of property is the only property that is taxed based on square footage of the site. And it runs up a pretty good tax bill for some of those properties. It seems to me that they should be taxed only on the major streets it takes to get them there. I'm not saying they shouldn't be taxed, but I think they're taxed more than they should be taxed. I'm willing to pay my fair share, but I don't like to pay more than my fair share.
I understand, sir.
The lady brought up a good question a while ago that I had too. There's a municipal franchise tax, a municipal utility tax.
And we'll, I'm going to bring that up during my discussion when it...
I missed the, you say you will bring that up.
I'm going to bring that up, once we're in discussion, we'll, I've been taking lots of notes, I'm going to wrap a lot of things up.
Another concern of mine is a fact...
Each member of council will have their opinion as well.
This is a special assessment, and as I read that letter, it's probably going to be in perpetuity.
That, that letter was written in consultant speak. It was not well-written. It was well-written to meet the statutes, it was not the way I would have written the letter, or I think anybody on the council would have written the letter, but...
Well, I've said my piece, and I know, I know this is a foregone conclusion, but I do not, I don't like the tax.
I understand, sir.
And I'm sure nobody likes the tax, probably you don't like it either.
We pay it too, so, don't forget, don't forget that, everybody, whatever we pass here, we pay as well. Yes, ma'am. Just name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dana Valentino, and I live on Hunter's Lane. Actually, I'm really happy that you clarified that everyone in Oviedo will be getting this, because my brother is actually the gentleman's neighbor in the sanctuary, and he told me he didn't get it, so now I can go, ha, ha, ha. I have a light...
Would you like us to make a photocopy, you can hand deliver it to him?
Yeah, that's okay. I'll tell him. I have a light, it shines significantly bright in my bathroom that pours into my master bedroom. So if there's any sort of discussion, if we're allowed to vote on the type of light bulb or something, I mean, I don't want to be like signaling the aliens or being kept awake all night. And LED, as we all know from people discussing, is significantly brighter than what's the soft bulb that's in there now. So if we can have any say, if it's, I know it's an easement, but if it's on our property, that would be very much appreciated.
Certainly.
So, thank you.
And I will let everybody in the audience know, as you leave this evening, when you go out the front door to my right, so it'll be everybody's left, in between the two buildings, Duke has installed one of the new fixtures, so that everybody can see what the new fixture would be like and the lighting would be like off the new fixture. So it is out there, as I said, out the door, my right, in between the public safety building, and this building out on the sidewalk, or your left. Is there anybody else who'd like to address council? I have no other written requests. I don't? There might be more. Everybody jumps in at the end.
Can I get this, too, I didn't fill it out, I just forgot?
Don't worry about it.
Okay.
Just name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Joe Anafree, and I live at 538 Whipper Will Lane. You know, and I've had the opportunity the last few weeks to go out and speak to a lot of people, a lot more, or even here today. I don't think I can say anything better than anybody's already set up here tonight, I'll not be redundant, but I can tell you with certainty that people don't want this, they don't want it. And I, like you said, not enough information may have come out in advance to give us a better idea of things, but I'll leave you with this. One older couple, as I was shaking their hand and walking away, they wouldn't let me go until I made a promise to them. I had to relay a message, and a message I happen to agree with. And they said that tonight will not be the only night in which the public speaks about this. They will speak about this November 6th. So I happen to agree, and I just hope you guys can take a lot into consideration, I hope there's a lot maybe we can do to try to avoid an assessment without having to put this on people. Because anybody knows, taxes only go up. So that's all I have to say.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else like to address city council? Yes, sir. Oh, we've got two. Gentlemen first, then ladies first.
Hey there, Laura Ho for Sugarberry Trail. I wish I was more prepared for how I feel about this whole issue, but I have not had the time to do the research. I know all the information's out there, just need to read all the minutes, so that's on me for not accessing that information. But I guess where I do hold an opinion for sure at this point is on how we determine what an EBU is. And it just, I understand millage doesn't seem fair, we've seen lots of different examples there, but when you think about the size of somebody's property, and determining that as the factor for how they're going to benefit from street lighting, just seems a little bit odd. Especially if you even just take the size of a property that's like rectangular in shape, and maybe the long end of it has a lot of streetlights, but then if it's turned the other direction, you know, maybe the short end is what touches the street, and you only have one streetlight. So it's still the same sized property, but more street lighting. Still one household not benefiting any more or less, especially on my way to Publix, right? So you might even say that perhaps an EBU should be determined by how far away I am from Publix versus the size of my property. So that could be another consideration. The other thing is, considering the gated communities, that makes sense as well, that they're paying for all of their own upkeep for everything past the gate. That makes sense, however, did the city require that they put up a gate? So it was a choice to be a gated community. Similar analogy to, if I choose to send my child to a private school, I'm not going to get a credit for my taxes paying for the public school. So just another perception there as well. And I do feel that if we're talking about lighting along the right-of-way throughout the whole entire city, everybody has equal access to the right-of-way. So everybody should be paying the same rate for that equal access. Just because you have 10 households within one building doesn't mean that each household is receiving 1/10 of the benefit of all 10 households that are in a row on my street. Is this, I mean, I guess is my, is my point of view coming across?
It is, yes.
Okay. So just my perspective, I understand it needs to be paid for, I get that part, but I just, I'm opposed to the way that you all are going towards at this point. I think we need to find a better way.
And we struggled with it.
I know you did, I know that you did, I know that you did, but I still think that it needs to be reconsidered. It should not be accepted as this...
As far as the, you know, the 10 and the commercial, all commercial gets treated the same. So we can't say, because you're an apartment complex, you're a different type of commercial than the mall.
But, but again, it's a household that we're talking about, it's to the people living in it, right?
No, 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 that isn't what that meant.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Okay, I misunderstood you.
Up to 10 dwelling units. So if it was a small little, we only have one or two of them here in the city where there are small complexes with six or eight apartments.
Okay.
That's what that meant. Not, not people, we're not coming to your house taking a census.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Bob Mertz, 331 Palmetto Street, Oviedo, Reed Manor subdivision. I just like in your discussion to find out why this wasn't a bond issue that we could all vote on, instead of being ran down our throats.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice? All righty, public comment is closed. So we will close our public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council. Can you make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we deny resolution 3588-18.
Dies for lack of a second. I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 3588-18 with the, the, Mr. Cobb, can you help me out with the language on the gated community?
You direct staff to include the credit for private streets.
Okay, I'm direct staff to include the credit for private streets.
Okay, a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Councilman Pollock, you have the floor.
This has, this has been a tough year for, for the city when it comes to the budget. This item, this item has come up, this is something that we've, we've looked at to help with some other issues that we're having in the, in the city as well. Right now, we're using funds for paving streets and gas taxes, which are for streets as well, we're using those to pay for this fee, to pay for all of our lights. The, so, no one up here is denying that this is an additional fee on top of the millage rate that we, we have currently kept for multiple years, which is probably one of the lowest, or it's a lower millage rate than it's been in a while. So, but where we're going with this is, we, we need to help upgrade the system, but we also need a funding source for the lights that we have. So, and then, as we spoke earlier, the lights on, or the dark areas on Mitchell Hammock, North Lockwood, and other areas of the city, we have, we, we've never had any kind of funding source to fund those upgrades, to light those streets. When you drive down Mitchell Hammock at night over at the sod fields, it is pitch black. It's very difficult, it's very difficult to see.
Hang on one second. Outbursts from the audience, you'll be asked to leave. We gave everybody your time, this is council discussion now. Okay? Am I clear, everyone? I've asked nicely how many times? Please.
It's very difficult to see on, on those parts of the road and other areas. I, I live out by North Lockwood, and I run down those streets at night, and it's dangerous. If you go down on the, if you look on the sides of the road, you'll see tire tracks from cars that have run off the road because of how dark it is. But this is, this is some of the, the items that we need to get done in the city to, to help with. The LEDs should have a benefit from a power consumption standpoint. The, one of the things that we had discussed before is, we are going to look at the different lights, that's not a done deal on that light out there. We're going to look at other lights as well, to make sure we get the right lights. The, as for the EBUs, one of the, one of the things that we've really struggled with is how to try to make this fair for, for households, as well as for, for commercial. And this, this methodology was, out of all the different, all the different methodologies we looked at, this methodology seemed to be the most fair. It's not perfect, we all know that. And it's something that can be adjusted over time, but this is, this is what we came up with. One of the things that we, we need to look at a little bit more is, is some of the general use parcels that do pay for their lightings, because they are similar to a gated community, they pay for all their lighting inside. But it's, but for right now, this is, this is what we have before us, and this is the best that, that we were able to put together that we felt was the most fair for the, for the, for the different levels of services being provided. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. For those of you leaving, I would encourage everyone to stay. There's a lot of explanations that are going to come out that might surprise some folks. Councilman Hank, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is one of those ones through the years that is always, always difficult. I look around the room, I see some candidates, my first thought is, you sure you want to do this, you know? But let me just start, I made, I took a lot of notes as we were going through, and I'll try to be brief. You know, nobody likes taxes. And I also, you know, being that it is election season, and some people have brought that out about, you know, the November 6th vote, you know, I personally don't care if the election's today, tomorrow, I always do what I feel is right in here. And I will tell you, for the, for the going on 14 years that I've sat up here, our millage rate, and let's be very clear about this, our millage rate is lower now than when I got here in 2005. It used to be 5.335, it is 5.28. And this chamber was bare when every year during the recession...
May I interrupt for a second? It's 5.28 with the Oviedo on the park bonds, it used to be 5.335 without that.
Correct. So the, so the millage rate is lower, you know, but through those lean years, when, you know, the revenue was not there, you know, we had our staff wearing multiple different hats, trying to not raise the millage rate. And I, I think, you know, we've done a very, a very good job. One thing I can tell you about the people that sit up here, having sat with them for a long time, is that they care very deeply for the city. So the streetlight fee is, is a difficult one. I actually, when it was first brought to me, and I think everybody up here will tell you, I said, hell, no, we're not doing this, this just doesn't seem right to me, it doesn't seem fair.
You were the only one no vote, at one time for this.
The first time it came up, I actually voted no. And then, you know, once again, you start listening to citizens, you know, I always, I always say the people always get it right, and they do get it right on Election Day, by the way. And I think they'll, they'll get it right this Election Day too, so just wanted to say that. But anyway, the millage rate is, is lower today than it was 14 years, and there was, you know, six, seven years where we cut the millage rate and we made... know, six, seven years where we cut the millage rate, and we made sure that you guys didn't have increases. So, but streetlights, let's not, let's not forget that streetlights, we're paying for them anyway. I mean, if you look in the agenda item, you know, last year was $729,000. We pay for them anyway, and they were paid, as Councilman Pollock said, they get paid with other funds, gas tax, and we're basically taking them out of road repaving to send them over to lights, which is not a correct way. Now, if you look at your water bill every month, you have stormwater, you have garbage, you have sewer, and this is now going to be in there. Honestly, an idea I had that didn't seem to fly, I still think it wouldn't be a bad idea, would be to put the 21 cents a day on the stormwater and water bill. You get that every day. That's basically what it is, 21 cents a day. But let me just hit a couple of points, because I know there's a lot. You know, we talk about, you know, why put lights on Mitchell Hammock? Well, as Councilman Pollock said, Mitchell Hammock's dark, we need to light it up. There are accidents, and you can email the police department, there's a lot of accidents there. I don't subscribe to the theory that lights don't stop traffic accidents, that they don't, you know, prevent crime. I'm on the, I'm on the other camp on that. So we need to light that up, because it's dark. Lockwood is dark, North Lockwood. I'd rather walk on a street with lights than on a street that's unlit. But I do agree, one gentleman brought up, you know, how he feels safe in Oviedo. I would walk any street in Oviedo at night, whether it had lights or not, but, you know, the research that I've done tells me when we light them up, we're a little bit better. Somebody mentioned growth, you know, and the traffic and the issues that we have. And I'm just going to morph off this. I want to remind everybody that Oviedo on the park was voted for by you all. It was not put in by the five of us or the predecessors before us. It was actually done before many of us even got here, was put out to the voters. They, they said, this is a plan that we could do, and it was passed pretty significantly. Does anybody remember?
About 60, 40.
60, 40?
50, 90.
Yeah, so, so Oviedo on the park got voted for by the residents to put that in. And I'm also going to add that I think it was originally supposed to be 1,600 total units in there, and it's maybe around eight, because we cut it, because we saw what you all saw. Addressing the traffic issues, you know, I want to make sure everybody knows that somebody talked about what's going on through downtown at Broadway and 434. Well, that's phase one of a plan to widen that all the way from Oviedo High School, come off that nice 426 that was widened, and take that all the way down to Lockwood. Now you've got two east-west highways. You have Mitchell Hammock, take some pressure off of that. Everybody coming from the east, out at Sanctuary, Live Oak, Riverside, and people coming from Orange County, they now have two east-west four-lane highways to go. So we're addressing, you know, the traffic concerns. Let's see, just a couple of things. You know, and it's all about choices, folks. I mean, we could not do this fee tonight, we could stop a lot of it, but then the choices become, what park do we close? What facility do we close? And I encourage everybody, it's online, read this budget. You know, the distrust of government at levels higher than us. You go home every night and you get sick when you go to bed. You listen to all this junk going on in the world. You know, I feel good about sitting here all these years and that we're trying to do the right thing, but it's all about choices. Our budget is very, very lean. You know, we've had, as you probably all see in your personal budgets, our medical costs for insurance, going through the roof. We're absorbing that. Our police and fire, the best anywhere, we don't want them to leave, but they look. And then they come here, they get trained, and they leave, and we have to take care of them, because when you dial 911, we want them to come. Some people, somebody spoke tonight about the hospital and giving them tax breaks. Yes, we did. And the reason we did it is because when you guys feel ill in the middle of the night, we did everything we could, and several of us up here, for many, many years, had so many meetings where we tried to get a hospital here, only to be left at the altar multiple times. They came, they were a little bit different than the other ones, but guess what? When you guys have chest pain in the middle of the night, I feel that, as an elected official, I did the best I could do to have you in a hospital as fast as possible. So yes, we did give tax breaks, and that's what people do when you want stuff in you. So I'm very proud of that. You know, you may not like the hospital, maybe other hospitals are better, you know, there's always complaints about everything, but my goodness, we have a hospital in Oviedo, and that took a long time and a lot of work to do. So I'm proud of that. I'm just, I'm just addressing some of the, some of the things I talked. I'll get back to the lights in a minute. I think I've hit pretty much, I wanted to answer what most of the residents said. But honestly, we're paying it now, and we're borrowing money for, money that we should be paving more roads. So you're paying it now. I wanted to put it in the millage to begin with, and it went on for months and months. I said, just put it in the millage, it'll be less, you know, stressful. People know they pay their taxes, we don't want to do it. The millage probably would be around what it was 14 years ago, maybe, maybe a tweak more. And one night, it was Councilman Pollock who brought up that point. You know, there's a big disparage. The person that has the $400,000 house and someone has 200, has the same light there. It's just not fair. None of us like it, but it's got to get paid, folks. You know, you have a full-service city here with so many amenities, and if you look at the budget, and I encourage, I see one, two, three candidates who want to sit up here, read it and go through it. And I think when you, when you get done looking at it, you'll say, my goodness, these guys are running a really tight ship, and you can account for every dollar. Mr. Boop is the best finance director anywhere. He's worked miracles with this. And, you know, if you have questions, email him. But this is not what you see on the news. We're not trying to get fat, we're not trying to rip off our residents, we're trying to do it as most economical as we can. I don't like it, it's not fun. But I will say this, in closing, somebody said, does this go on in eternity? In my mind, no, it does not, because here's what we have to look forward to. A lot of these buildings we have, the one you're sitting in tonight, the debt's going to retire on it. Some of our other buildings, the debt was going to retire, so that gives us more income. And for me, to me, this is temporary, because once I see, for lack of a better word, the mortgage is paid, well, guess what? Once I see the mortgage is paid, and now we have other money coming in, all these other things get cut, including this. So I take a little bit different turn on that. I am very conservative, every dollar's important, and we will take a look at this every year and see where it goes. But just, if you take one thing from what I said tonight, we're paying this now. We've been paying it forever to the power companies. Will it save electricity? We all know, you go to Home Depot now, you can't buy an incandescent bulb. You buy the LED, you stick it in, I've had, have some in my house that have been there like forever. Is the light the same as the sodium vapor? It's a little bit different, but before they put it up, if you guys go out there tonight, you don't like it, let us know, we'll figure out what works for everybody. As I always say, we want everybody to be a winner here. If we don't all win, nobody wins. So this is a tough one for us tonight to do, but, you know, for me, I think it's, it's something that, in the end, will probably be fine. You'll get more roads paved, that money will go back to where it was. But please, people mentioned the budget, go read it, I think you'll be pretty proud of your staff and us for the way it was handled. So it's not perfect, folks, but we're doing the best we can.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Councilman Britton? Deputy Mayor, excuse me.
Well, you guys have said a lot of what I would say. I'm just going to make some observations. First of all, I'd like to apologize for that letter that went out. I think a lot of the anger was geared towards the verbiage of it, and it was, you know, legalese. I read it, and I thought, what the heck is this? You know, it's a stern letter, but it's, it's just something we have to issue as statute. The other thing I want to say is, from observing the group here tonight, I want to compliment you. I think this is the most civil, discordant discussion we've had over a contentious issue. You know, we've been here before where we've had people escorted out for yelling at us or whatever, but I got to compliment you on being polite and maintaining decorum. So with that, you know, I got to tell you, this isn't the same city I moved into 30 years ago, in 1990, when I came here. But I also tell you, this isn't going to be the same city 30 years from now. We're growing, we've got a tremendous amount of opportunities compared to what we had in 1990. We've got a huge amount of amenities that are frankly very costly, and as far as budgets are go, it's a very complicated process. And the cost increased. Our staff, Mr. Boop, came to us and said, look, we've got a choice. We've got a bill here to pay that we've been paying with, we've been robbing our road fund to pay the light bill. Here's your choice, you know, raise the millage rate, or do what we've done with the water bills and everything else, which we've talked about, and make it an enterprise fund. That's all this was about, and it's been going on since February. And frankly, the folks that were coming to the meetings continuously from February, listening to the budget, were actually encouraging us to do this, because it really identifies what money's going where, and it keeps the, the funds that we want to use for roads and whatnot intact. So that's what this has been all about since February. We may not agree with it, but it's a tough choice. You know, I don't agree with it, I hate taxes. And we've always said, this is, this is really a tax increase. It amounts to, what I did Monday afternoon, it amounts to my Chick-fil-A meal once a month. It's about $7 a month. We could have put that on the, on the millage rate, and you would have saw the disparity. And I would think we'd still have the same crowd here complaining about that. It's not an easy decision to make. And I would just have to tell you that the way we are now, and the way we're going to be 30 years from now, is, is to me, just incredible. We've got so many opportunities. The golf course was another tough choice. We had a choice of running, extending Long Branch Road down the fifth fairway to connect with 419. That was one of the concepts, to put all those homes down there. I'll tell you, during Irma, I had my neighbors and myself running our pumps, full speed, they emptied the pools because the water was rushing into the backyard so fast. All that water ended up on the golf course. It is really a stormwater retention area. It's a strategic decision on our part to possibly keep it a golf course and possibly make it a strategic partnership with UCF, because their golf team plays there, practices there, and it's got potential, maybe not next year, but soon, to be a venue for UCF and an amenity for all of us. So these decisions, I know, I know you guys don't want to come to every budget meeting, but these are discussed and they're vetted. Staff crunches numbers endlessly, and we have to come up with a way to do it. Our choice this time was to pull it out, make it an enterprise fund. I don't think it's going to be forever. In fact, Brian, can you, can you clarify whether we could lower this fee over time as each year, or is this a fixed, fixed item?
Actually, we can take a look at it annually.
Annually?
Yes, sorry. And if you think about it, this year, there's, this year, there are certain expenses that are built into the fee, that cover the how we, how we prepared the fee. And so next year, those expenses won't be there. And so I anticipate that the fee will actually reduce next year.
Okay. You know, I happen to think that the gated communities benefit by driving down the thorough fairs just as much as anyone else. I didn't really catch the language, but is the language to give them a discount, or are they exempt?
It would be a discount.
A discount, okay.
Yes.
And the gentleman who came in earlier, speaking of the commercial properties, I kind of wonder whether they should get a discount, too, because they pay to maintain and do the same thing the gated communities do, but they're paying the full rate. So is there a way in the future we can address that?
We can take it, we can analyze it in the future. I can just, from my own perspective, I'm having, I'm struggling with it, just because I, I, there are more things that are not alike between private streets and single-family neighborhoods and commercial parking lots than there are alike. And so I'm struggling with it. But yes, we can make that part of our annual assessment. We can, when we go in and analyze this each year, we can look at that and see if that's something that needs to be developed.
Okay. Just to close, if you think we take this lightly, think again. We've been struggling with this for six months now. It's not the easiest thing in the world to do. We've got to make a decision. Jerry, maybe you can come up and tell us if, what the impacts of not doing this would If we said no tonight, what would we need to be doing?
If we said no tonight, we would be in the same position that we were last year when we were developing this budget. What will we not do to accommodate the payment of the lights that we currently pay for? And last year, when we developed the budget, I think each of you will remember that we had to do a lot of movement out of the general fund, basically to make the expenses that are in the general fund match the millage rate. And a significant portion of that was moving about $550,000 in lighting expense out of the general fund into the local option gas tax fund, so that we could have, so that we could fund the general fund and actually pay for the lighting expenses. So we would have to do a move like that again this year, and determine what we may put off, or have to put off, on the local option gas tax fund, such as paving, or other items in the general fund that we just can't afford to pay for.
Okay, so you get an example of the complexity of funding a large city. We could, we could not pave our roads, or we can pay the light bill, the light bill's going to come anyway. We've got to pay it. We can't tell Duke we're not going to pay it. So we put our roads off. One of the things we're struggling with right now that isn't in the budget is a capital improvement program. We've got aging facilities that we can't afford to maintain. We've got to figure out somehow in the future to set up a budget and a five-year plan to go through and start maintaining these facilities and keeping them running. Otherwise, we're going to be doing everything on an emergency basis, like we did Monday night. So for the future, we're going to have these conversations again, but I wouldn't lose sleep over the fact that we've got a great city, and we've got a lot of things to look forward to in this city in the coming years.
Mr. Mayor, can I just piggyback one thing, if you have?
I'm done, that's good.
I just want to, I just, I don't like when citizens come and they feel like their question wasn't answered, so I just want to piggyback one thing, because we've talked about this golf course forever. Councilman Britton talked about it. That, too, has an end game. You know, everybody thinks it's forever. And just, just to be clear, the choice we had with that golf course was to put 300 or 400 homes there, and I can tell you, the crowd would have been much bigger than it was tonight, okay? And that, and that was also very difficult, because you all emailed us for over a year, and we couldn't talk to you, because we had to be fair. We had to listen to both sides, it was a quasi-judicial hearing. So our choice was 300 to 400 homes. But the end game with that is, we invested, in basically you all, three years, we're into it for 18 months. I don't play golf, maybe I played one time when I was 12. But the people that do play golf tell me, this place is looking tremendous. I went out there, it does look pretty, pretty nice. But guess what? In 18 more months, if it's not working, because, you know, we have campaigners out there, and it's an issue, and it's a, it's a good one for them to talk about, but there is an end game. If it doesn't work in three years and we're losing money on it, guess what? It becomes public lands like we all promised. So there is an end game, contrary to what you, you all see on, on social media. So there's always a plan, you know, and just, just keep that...
Let me just get to the councilwoman and myself. Councilman?
The way that EBUs are calculated is so imperfect in my mind, that I just cannot wrap my brain around it at this time. As Mr. Boop, our finance director, has explained, there is an alternative, and that is to pick other things to cut from the budget. But getting back to the fairness or lack of, lack thereof, just between, I believe it's August 6 meeting, and now, the consultant went back and evaluated the fairness of charging full freight, one EBU, for roads in private communities. And it's not necessarily a gated community, it's just a private road. I happen to live on a private road, so I would assume this applies to me. I also live in a neighborhood that has wooden utility poles with overhead lights attached right off of them. So we do not have any light posts that will ever incur any additional cost for anybody in Oviedo. There is a cost for the little metal thing that comes off and the light that shines down, but we don't pay for the lines, whereas many places do. We don't pay for the post, so there's both rental and maintenance on the post. So within the city of Oviedo, there's a great amount of... So within the city of Oviedo, there's a great amount of disparity, neighborhood by neighborhood, in what, uh, direct benefit the people in the immediate vicinity receive. And based on our consultant's report, 56% of whatever we are paying is for the lights within that immediate district. So there's just a lot of disparity there. And, uh, the way this works out, uh, is, is, is an interesting thing. By choosing to do a fee instead of millage, what this ultimately does, if it, on the, on average, uh, it seems to shift more of the burden towards the people who have lower-valued properties and shift the tax burden away from those who have higher-valued tax properties. Uh, when you go and you look at what the consultant told us the equivalent millage rate would be if we were to try to acquire this amount of money via that method versus the EBU method, the 78, 70, uh, was it $78.13? When you find where that cross point is, it's about, uh, if we just funded it at what we did last year, $800,000, it's .338 mils. And when you do the math, you find that anyone who has an assessed value lower than $230,000, those people will be paying more for, more of their fair share towards lighting. Anybody whose assessed value exceeds $230,000 will be paying less. Uh, so when you take this into the context of commercial, you look at something like Oviedo on the park and the apartments. Uh, the, the difference in what they would pay doing the EBU method versus millage, it's about $11,800 each and every year that they pay less doing it the method that is being proposed today. And fairness has been discussed. This is kinda where we've ended up. I, I still do not feel that it is fair and did support creating a light district in the first place because I do love government accountability and having everything in a segregated account and the opportunity to look at that under a microscope. But facts being fluid and data constantly updating, we have been able to, in just two weeks, update and improve the quality of data to, to say that perhaps people on private streets should not be paying for streetlights. So I think that's a very interesting, uh, way that in just 14 days, data has improved. So with the speed with which we can improve data, my preference would be, and it doesn't seem my, my colleagues are, are leaning this way, I think it would make sense for us to choose what $900,000 not to fund in the budget. And one of the reasons I think that this is possible has a lot to do with how we have used past special funds in the past, uh, in the, in the last year and a half since I have been here. Uh, we, we took about $600,000 out of the stormwater fund and pointed it towards the golf course. We took $500,000 out of the water sewer fund and pointed it towards the golf course. Uh, of, of the money that was, uh, given access, that the golf course was given access to, we, we've spent $250,000 on sand traps. We have reworked the sprinklers. Uh, so this is in addition to the $5.5 million initial capital investment. Uh, so we've got five and a, yeah, five, five, 5.465, we'll be specific. And then another 1.1 was authorized. And then we were able to sneak in some paving under another line item in the budget. So a lot is just, we're able to find money when we find the need to prioritize. And in this situation, I, I think it is quite possibly an issue of our lack of desire to prioritize what we want to spend the money that we already have on. So that's my two cents and I, I hope you guys will take that into consideration.
All right.
I, I just had one, one question, Mr. Cobb. On, on the motion I made, um, we're just excluding gated communities, not private roads, correct? Because private roads, do they pay for their streetlights on private roads?
As far as what we have is that most of the communities, I would say almost all but one or two of the communities are gated. But we do have, I know of at least one community where it's not gated, but it's private roads within the community and the HOA does fund the streetlights.
Okay.
So I would want to include that community as well, uh, even as, you know, as part of it. When I was looking at the list of communities that was developed, that, that community, though it does not have gates, it does have private streets and it does have privately-funded streetlights, that community was included in the list.
Okay, so those, those communities that privately fund their streetlights will receive the?
Yeah, either HOA, yes.
The, the rebate or whatever you wanna call it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I ju, I just wanted to clarify that because if, if it's, if it's a private road and it's still being, the streetlights are?
So if the people on that private road, uh, request that the city remove the lights, then would they be considered not to be a drain? I see you're trying to cut me out here. This is hurting my feelings, man.
Well, no, I'm not trying to cut you out. I'm just trying to make sure that if, if the city's paying for the lights, then?
There are, there are no lights anywhere near my house and I'm okay with that. Uh, some of the people out here were, were talking about how there were no lights and they don't want them. That's where I fall. Uh, so it didn't occur to me until right now that I am on a private road, so.
Guys, let's not have a debate. Let's.
All right, so that, that, that was my two cents.
Mr. Pollock had a question.
But 12, about 12% of people do appear to, if there's 1,500 homes in these private gated communities, private or gated, however we're classifying it, and 12,000 total, that ends up being about, you know, 11, 12% of everybody. So if those people are paying less, who then is paying more to get to the total value that is needed or rather desired?
Okay, that was fun. Where do I start? Let's start with, we have the second lowest millage rate in all of Seminole County. All right? Residents in our city do not realize the value of your tax dollars with the amenities that you have in this city. I'm sorry you don't. I realize nobody wants to pay $78 a year or more, I get it. But second lowest millage rate in all of Seminole County and you all live in Oviedo where everybody else in the world wants to live. I'm gonna show you some things. And I, I have a whole list of questions, I'm gonna answer them all. But we'll start here. Total millage rate in the city of Oviedo, because we all got these, right? Got them yesterday. My taxes went up $23 this year. Uh, our total millage rate adds up to 16.7263, total. That's your schools, your county, and your city. To the city, out of my $3,450 that I'm gonna be asked to donate this year, $1,039 of that goes to the city. The rest of it's going to the school district, going to the county, going to the water management district. So 16.7263. Now I'm gonna show you something. Here's a rental property out. This is in Orange County, behind UCF, not in the city. No amenities, no Oviedo on the park, no parks and rec program, doesn't have its own police force, doesn't have its own fire department, doesn't have events, doesn't have anything. It's in unincorporated Orange County. 16.4127 and a streetlight fee, $70 a year. New Smyrna Beach, Bill. Okay? Another rental. Total millage, 18.94. Now let me, let me, let's read this one, 'cause this one's a lot of fun. I love paying this one every year. We pay for county library, Volusia Forever, Volusia Echo, county forever, mosquito control, pay for the Port Authority. I don't know when I have ever used the Port Authority, but I pay for it. Uh, Florida inland navigational district, pay for the hospital. You all brought up our hospital and how we gave them $450,000 over five years. Over five years, they're paying $1,000,000 in taxes. We rebated them $450,000. So I don't ever wanna hear anyone ever say again that that hospital isn't paying taxes right now, 'cause they are. They're incrementally going up to full value in five years. They pay 1.1 million over the five years, we gave them back 450,000 of it, but yet on this bill, to Florida Hospital, I donate $217 every year. So yes, nobody likes paying taxes. Nobody likes paying for things. Everybody likes enjoying things. Everybody likes to feel safe. Everybody wants to have the best police force, the best fire department, and we've got it all. Uh, well, these are irrelevant. That's just more Seminole County ones. This was a good one that was brought up earlier and everyone's touched on this. We haven't been paying for them. You know, somebody pinged me on Facebook, as most of you know, I'm on there a lot and I try to answer all your questions as best I can when I'm there. Somebody, somebody pinged me and said, "We have to get the streetlight fairy to pay for the lights." It was the most ridiculous comment I've ever heard. You've all been paying for the streetlights. Everyone's paying for them. Doesn't matter. This is just how we pay for them. Let's talk about the budget, because that was brought up. And, and again, folks, I, I know I sound passionate about it. I've been doing this 20 years. I, 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 every year, we've never raised our taxes. We've cut them, we've cut them, we've cut them. We do more with less every year. And, you know, the councilwoman's right. We can go into the budget, cut more things out, but what gets cut out is raises for the employees, what gets cut out are capital improvement projects, what gets cut out are, we could shut parks, we can do a lot of things. But you know what? You can all sit there and shake your heads like this, but one man's fat is another man's meat. Because what'll happen is when we go to shut down that park room, we'll have a roomful of those people. We go to cut out that event, we'll have a roomful of those people. You know, it's a balancing act. How many of you have kids still in school? I don't. Well, let me, let me take my five tax bills I have for Seminole County here and let me add up how much in taxes I send for schools. You know why? To benefit for everyone. To benefit that these kids go to school, get educations and become, uh, adults who give back to the community. Hopefully they do. The budget, let's talk about it. Somebody brought up, "I pay a franchise fee on my electric bill." Yeah, you do. So do we. Used to pay a franchise fee on your telephone bill. Who has a telephone still in their house? Well, some of us still, I have one too. I have one as well, but I have a Vonage phone. So guess what? I don't pay a franchise fee. There used to be franchise fees on your cellphones. Anybody notice they're kinda gone now? State legislator took those away. Uh, there still are franchise fees on the electric. Uh, there's franchise fee on your water bill and I'm gonna talk about all that in a little bit. But here's my point. Budget's $31 million, folks. That's what the general fund budget is in the city of Oviedo. Your general fund budget is what pays your day-to-day, everyday operations. Pays for your employees, pays for your police, pays for your fire, pays for your parks, pays for your public works, pays for your lights. I must be missing things in general fund, but you get my point. 31 mil. You know how much of that 31 million is property taxes? You think it, it's all property taxes, don't you? Nope. 40%. $12 million of a $31 million budget is property tax. We don't bring in enough property tax to fund police and fire by themselves. Police and fire costs, Chief, your budget, nine million, eight and a half? Right, Chief, your what? Five?
Six.
Six. All righty. $14.5 million to keep you all safe. We do a damn good job of it. We don't bring in enough taxes to fund them. So where's the money come from? The tax fairy drives over us and rains it down? No, folks, it comes from franchise fees, comes from sales tax, comes from gas tax. That's what funds 17 and a half or 18 million, Jerry, of our budget? Approximately? All right? Okay. I'm using round numbers for close enough. It's all online, guys. The city doesn't hide anything from you. Everything that I just said to you, you can go online and see it. Anytime of the day, 24/7, it's on the website. You can watch your council meetings here in the city of Oviedo. You can, you can, after the meetings are done, the videos are posted of the council meetings, they're indexed. You just wanna see us talk about one particular item, you click that item, video goes right to it. You can watch us on TV. You can watch us on U-verse. And if all of that doesn't work, you can livestream us to your phone. Point being, very transparent down here. Been talking about this since February. This isn't new. It's been on and it's been everywhere. You have many things in this city. Does anybody think any other city? We do newsletters. You get them twice a month. If you're not signed up for it, cityofoviedo.net, go to the bottom, sign up for E-News. Anybody think any other city does this? You know what they do in Winter Springs? They put an audio of the meeting up two days later. That's it. No video. The only other city in this county that televises their meetings is Lake Mary. And that's the reason why we don't have anybody up in the booth, I think, because it's Lake Mary tonight, they're usually thirsty.
I think it's Altamont Springs.
Oh, Altamont, okay. Uh, so, you know, it, it, we live in a first-class community. So that letter that went out, I agree. Mr. Cobb can attest. As soon as I got it, I called him, I said, "What the hell is this?" I mean, 'cause I read that thing and I was confused and I sit here and we do this. And statutorily required. Let's talk about millage. You know, why don't you apply this to millage? Well, you know, that's been pretty well said by, I think, all of us. I mean, we, there is no, and I'll agree with the councilwoman, there is no absolutely fair, perfect way. I mean, you could slice dice and we, we might disagree on mythology, but I, I can agree with you that there isn't any perfect way to do this. I, I can 100% agree. Because, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna do it one way, someone's gonna say, "I'm affected." You can do it the other way, someone's gonna say, "They're affected," blah, blah, blah. We, we, we picked the best way possible, but the, the perfect part about an enterprise fund, councilwoman said it, councilman Britton, everybody said it, is that every year, the enterprise fund can only bring in the dollars that it needs to operate. It's very transparent. So let's talk about enterprise funds. Garbage is an enterprise fund. Right? Everybody pays $19 a month for garbage. How many have no kids at home, raising a hand? How many have four or five kids at home? It's too late. All right, but family size. So let's, let's talk about garbage. I can sit here and say, "I'm an empty nester. Why do I pay the same amount of garbage for garbage that Councilman Pollock does with 12 kids at home?" It only seems that way 'cause you'd have to meet his kids, they're very active. Uh, he has three. But you get my point? It's not, it, it, how can garbage at $19 be fair? Why is that fair? Why am I subsidizing someone else's garbage? Because that's the most equitable way to do it. You don't agree?
No.
Okay, that's fine. Stormwater. We all pay $10 a month for stormwater. Okay, I own a third of an acre of land at my house. You might be on a quarter of an acre, you, you're probably smaller than a quarter. Your kid's on a huge piece of land, but yet we all pay the same. Why is that? Because you take the enterprise fund, what staff needs in order to maintain the ponds, you divide it up by a, I think it's done by an EBU, there's some other, is it an EBU with somewhere?
ERU.
ERU, oh gosh, another government acronym. Uh, ERU and it's divided up and you come up with the $10.20. Okay, so out of that $10.20, $2 of it goes for the purchase of the golf course, which I'm gonna get to in a moment. Not gonna leave that out. Uh, $8 of it goes towards stormwater. Now, stormwater has been a little rough right now. You heard us say earlier, 41, 42 inches of rain in the last month or so, or two months or whatever it is, it's been horrific. Places are holding water now that have never held water ever before. But, you know, why don't we do these by millage? So let, let's take what the equivalent of $19 for the garbage is, let's convert it to millage and then, you know, those of you who live in homes that are valued more than $100,000 or whatever it may be, will pay more for garbage. You should. You live in a bigger house. You can't do that. It's the same benefit. Golf course. Oh, water sewer, there's another one. That's the one I forgot. Everybody pays the exa- Everybody pays the exact same for access to water and sewer. And then you pay by the gallons that you use. So that one's actually probably the most fair. Got a big family, use more water, you wanna keep your grass lush and green, you know, you wanna throw lots of fertilizer down and make Megan cringe, uh, you know, that's your choice. You pay for that. That one's probably a little bit more fair. Golf course, let's talk about that one. That's, everyone likes to kick on the golf course. Let me find my notes of that. Hang on a second here, I wrote it down somewhere. All right, so the golf course. The golf course was gonna turn into either 300 homes or a court case, if we denied it, that our city attorney said there was no way to guarantee an outcome. Did you not say that, Mr. Group?
That's correct.
Did you not say to us that you could argue that case for that PUD either way?
That's correct.
All right. So that's the choice we had. We tried--
Expensively either.
I'm sorry?
Expensively either.
Yes. Because that's not covered by insurance. So, you know, we, we, the golf course developer comes in, they, they submit for their application, and, you know, they weren't, they weren't using, you know, a little attorney down the road. They had these guys from Tallahassee who, this is all they do. They, they worked for, uh, St. Joe's, the big landowner.
Yes.
Port St. Joe Paper Company.
Right. They were their attorneys. And you know what they do all day long? They go fight municipalities over property rights. That's the firm they hired. So that's what we were facing. They wanted to put 300 homes on the golf course, they wanted to cut the golf course in half, they wanted to put homes, give us some, put a road through it, ruin what the golf course is for. Stormwater. The whole entire Conalachi drains into that darn thing. Anybody see that during the hurricane last year? Everybody see that picture that went up on Facebook? The only things that were above water were the clubhouse and the UCF training facility. The course did what it was supposed to do. It flooded, it held everything. But now, let's talk about the other side of the golf course that nobody likes to ever talk about. All they like to say is that, you know, "City owns a golf course, they're spending all this money on it." First and foremost, we did spend money out of the stormwater fund and the water and sewer fund to improve the golf course. Why? Why, why did you do that, City Council? Anybody ever see the perk ponds right behind us? Anybody see, right behind City Hall here, that, uh, uh, chain-link fence with the barbed wire? Ever wonder what it is? Well, folks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, you pay $325,000 a year for that barbed-wire fence on a lease, so that we can take reclaimed water from the sewer plant that we don't sell or don't have room to store and perk it out there. Know what perk means? Disposal. Get rid of it. That's why every now and again, you'll drive past it, you go, "Ooh, what is it?" It's the sofa water getting thrown out. The golf course is going to become the repository for that water. So instead of wasting it, we're gonna store it in the ponds at the golf course. Reuse it. Why should we waste it? We could use it to water the golf course, or a park if that's what it becomes one day. Councilman Hank and, Councilwoman, everybody up here has, has said if the thing doesn't start to break even, which, by the way, we don't own a park in this city that breaks even. Not one. Do you think the kids who play baseball at OSC and pay, pay the league $70, or whatever it is, and the league pays us, what, Drew, 30 bucks?
For hit B?
Yeah, per, per kid?
Resident, non-resident.
Okay. Do you think the parks pay for themselves? Quality of life, guys. Quality of life. But anyway, we're gonna store it there. How many of you enjoy Cranger's Park up in Altamont? Ever go up there? How many of you know that Cranger's Park is a giant reclaimed water-holding facility? That's what it is. Takes all the water from I-4, plus their extra affluent that they make over at the plant, they store it there, and then they pump it out back to their residents, because Altamont is actually completely piped for reclaimed water to all their residents. They hold so much of it there that they're starting to sell some to a popcorn. Now, I don't know if we'll ever hold enough or bring enough that we can do things like that, but that's what we're gonna do. So when those pipes get shifted around, that $300,000 a year, 300, right, Brian? Plus taxes, don't we pay the taxes on top of it or something?
We pay the lease, the lease plus the taxes, that's your 325.
325 a year, folks. You wanna talk about a waste of money? There it is. We inherited that lease when we bought the sewer plant. Wasn't something that our staff negotiated, it came with it. So, you know, to, to, to say we're not looking at changing things and saving money and having a plan, I, I, I just, I don't see it. I think it's that everybody focuses on one issue, which I understand. You all live busy lives. You elect us to take care of this, but we are taking care of it. We are taking care of things. We are getting things done. Um, let's just see, I know I had a lot more here. Uh, garbage, stormwater. Uh, oh, the cost, let's talk about the cost. It's been brought up tonight. Uh, somebody said, uh, you know, the 1.1 million, and that is correct. It's 1.1 million the first year. There's the work costs and setting this all up that are gonna be recouped that go away next year. When those costs go away, about $100,000, Mr. Cobb, just for a round number?
Roughly $100,000.
The fee's gonna go down 10%. I mean, it's gonna happen automatically, 'cause the fund can only bring in what it needs. As the councilwoman said, it's a very transparent fund. It's very simple, this one. Uh, as the capital improvements start to occur, as lights start to get added to the older neighborhoods, and, uh, Councilwoman, I know you said you don't want lights, I've got calls from many of your neighbors who are begging for lights, so I'll let you all fight that one out. But, um, as the upgrades happen, as the poles get replaced, you know how many phone calls we get about poles that are splitting, cracking, not painted? And, and there's no money for us to replace these things. We go back to Duke, we tell them, "Well, you gotta maintain them," Duke goes out there, they sand them down, they throw a coat of spray paint on them, and they call it a day. Um, that, that's how this gets done. There is no money when folks in Alafer Woods call us up, uh, and there's dark spots on McKinnon for us to add lights. To add four lights is 15,000 bucks. That's what it is. Um, Mitchell Hammock, North Lockwood, those are examples that were brought up, because those are glaring issues that we have, that staff always wants to identify and fund. But here's what happens. You keep your streetlights in your general fund, and we raise your millage in order to cover this $800,000, $900,000, you have no accountability for it, per se. It's in the general fund. So, okay, these five council members are sitting up here, and we created that, and we know that's what we wanna do with it. What happens, three or four years, and now when there's five different council persons, and staff comes up and say, you know, "We have a shortage over here," or they decide they wanna do something over there, and gas tax money gets robbed again. We didn't wanna take the gas tax money and do this last year. Phil, you came up and you said Mitchell Hammock Road needs to be repaid. Well, you know, we spent $500,000 of it last year lighting up the city. Bills have to be paid. I mean, there, there, there isn't a choice. Um, the millage, just if it wasn't a millage equivalent, um, just for the lights and electricity themselves is .33, but the millage, the way the study is presented with the upgrades and everything built into it, is actually .041. So when you take .041 and you extrapolate it and you change it to what's your actual value of your house, the value of your house now becomes about $180,000 taxable value. So, let's see, let's take a look here. What do we got here? Let's see, the home I live in is 246. This property is 157, 175, 160, 156. So you know what? It's about equal. Not too far off. More on some, a little less on the others. Tax rate. I've mentioned to you already that we have the second-lowest millage rate in Seminole County. Now, Winter Springs will tell you that they do, and we fight back and forth on this, and it's like a .000002, something, uh, different. So let's just say we're tied. For the, for the second-lowest millage with, with the bond referendum for Oviedo on the park added into it. The millage was 5.335 when I was elected 20 years ago. Millage today is 5.07, plus .18 for Oviedo on the park, which is the general obligation bond, that goes down each and every year. As tax base grows, that goes down. How many of you have been in the city since we did that election? That would've been 2004. You're all paying .51 or something like that for it back then. That's, that's what you voted to tax yourselves. And whether you voted for it or not's irrelevant. It passed almost 60%. It's dropped. This fee will drop with time. Somebody brought up, well, I can talk about parkland too. Uh, somebody brought up, um, owning the lights. You know, there, there's all different ways of looking at it, you know, whether you own the light, meter the light, uh, then you gotta maintain the light, uh, as opposed to leasing the light. We've had, I've had at least one company call me who wants to go out and, what, do condemnation and take all the lights, and, is that about what they said? I mean, you know, I'm not quite sure we're there yet. Florida Power, who does the eastern side of the city, um, has already committed to lowering our electric cost on the LED lights. Was minimal, 6,000 a year, something like that, 7,000 a year, Bobby. Wasn't a lot, but they've committed to it. Down at Florida League of Cities, while I was talking with the Duke guys, uh, because they had a booth there, and, uh, lo and behold, the folks we needed to actually talk to were there, which was great. You know, they've come up with a new light, which is the one that's out front, that the capital rental fee and everything for the light is exactly the same as what we have currently. So yes, the study is assuming that things may cost more money, but we're finding ways where we can make them cost equivalent. Uh, when I asked them if electricity costs would go down, they said that is something that is looked at and is regulated by the PSC. We don't have anything to do with the PSC. But it is regulated by them. So, you know, if we have all of our lights converted over to LED, and we know we're using less power, well, then we have lobbyists up in Tallahassee, we'll just send them after it. Let them go, argue that our electric rate should come down, 'cause we've done this conversion, which will hopefully bring the thing down even more. Once that couple hundred thousand is out of it, the fee comes down even more. So, yes, we understand, folks. We get it. It's an increase. Nobody's gonna sit here and tell you it isn't, 'cause it is. Anybody tells you any different, they're lying to you. We're not here to lie to you. We're here to tell you the truth. Park, you know, I, I heard about the overdevelopment. You know, we hear all that all the time. My gosh. Uh, guys, I'm gonna break it to you. You live in a city. You don't live in the country. You live in an urban area. That's what Oviedo is. It was defined an urban area 30 years ago. It was defined an urban area by the regional growth map that was done called How Shall We Grow? It was defined an urban area the moment you all went out and voted in 2004 for the rural boundary line. Because you voted for the rural boundary line, which Oviedo supported, only city to support, everything east of it is rural, right? Just a big battle about it over at the County Commission. Everything west of it is urban. You all live in an urban area. You live in a small city, next to the second-largest university in the country. Hate to break it to you, but that's what you do. I understand it's changed. I've been here 22 years. Megan was--
Born and raised.
Right. Megan was born here. Keith's been here since the 80s. Winter Park, right? Right, so he was born in Winter Park. They didn't even come out here. They were like, "Oh shit, what the heck is that foreign country out there?" Changed. It, it's what's happening. Uh, but, your city has the most parkland and conservation acreage per capita than any other city in Seminole County. And guys, it's not even close. We are more than double any other city in Seminole County. And you know why? Because we buy land when we can. We buy golf courses, we buy, um, Shane Kelly Park, we buy all the land up and down Lockwood Boulevard. We own all, all the land by OSC. We've purchased more by OSC. We bought the old landfill. Every time we can, we just purchased a little bit of land around, around Lake Park to complete it. But guess what? The tax fairy doesn't just rain the money down, comes from somewhere, guys, comes out of the general fund to buy all this stuff. To have it, to hold it, to put it in preservation forever. The, uh, the grant that you saw on the, uh, consent agenda that was mentioned earlier, that's to recoup some of that money. We do it every time we can. Because, and, and that's what we said right from the very beginning when we were talking about buying that golf course. But here's the little problem that you have, is that you can't really get the grant money anymore, you used to be able to. This, the state doesn't have enough funds in these FCT, FCT, uh--
FCT.
Uh, they don't have the money like they used to, where we used to be able to go, apply for the grant to buy the parcel of land, show them how much money we were willing to put up, and then they would give us the money upfront. That's how we purchased Shane Kelly Park. It happened just as I was first elected. Um, now what you have to do is you put yourself in a better position, you go out and purchase the property, and then try to carve some of it out that meets their needs, which is what we're doing with the golf course. And, uh, we don't know how much that grant's gonna be. I mean, it, it doesn't matter what it is. We get a grant for $1 million, it's $1 million less that we have to pay back on the, uh, bond that was taken by the stormwater fund for the golf course, which, you know, eventually when that gets paid off, it drops. So, I mean, I, I guess I can go on and on, and I have already, and it's getting late. But, um, you know, this is important, that everybody understands this. Now, you know, you still may not agree with the fee. I get it. I understand it. I, I don't think I'm ever gonna convince Mr. Dunlop that we meet statute, but that's okay. The, the man is articulate, the man is educated, the man, the stuff you send us, the amount of time that you take to write all that, I'm impressed. But, uh, you know, it, it, at least you understand what we're facing. And it's $78, and we can tweak it as we go along. And then we still haven't even set the budget, who knows? I don't, I don't think the magic budget fairy's gonna find $800,000 to cut out of the budget, guys. I mean, I'm, that's just me speaking, I'm not speaking for the other four. So don't hold this against anybody else that's sitting up here. This is me speaking. Uh, we, we, there are needs in our budget, things that we push off, and hopefully we'll have a little bit of a carryover from last year, which can help, but Jerry, you don't know that until November-ish. Right. Right, 'cause we gotta wait for all the bills to come in. The budget runs till September 30, just like your budget at home, you gotta wait for all the bills to come in, they pay all the bills, and hey, I'd love nothing more than for Jerry to walk in here and say, "Hey, guys, we have an extra half a million dollars, we're gonna catch up on some of these capital projects we've been putting off." Five years, five years? Employees didn't get raises during the recession?
Yes, sir.
Six, maybe?
At least five.
At least five.[1643.04] 401Ks. We cut them in half what we-
Yes, sir.
All right? So, when Councilman Henkin was talking about before, when we were in the recession and we were cutting, 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 your staff gave back so much that we haven't given back to them yet. We're starting to get the pay scale up a little bit. We've done some pay study adjustments. We've, I think the pay is set to go up 3 percent this year?
It's proposed.
Hmm?
It's proposed.
Proposed. 3 percent this year, that's right. We haven't approved it yet. But that's what the budget is built on. Their pay going up 3 percent. They only get, our employees, y'all, they're not in the Florida retirement system, okay, like most other cities are. We have a 401K system here, you know, so they put in 5 percent, they get 5 percent. All right? It makes it very difficult sometimes to recruit employees into our city because our pay scale is in the middle-ish, right?
A little below, but yes.
All right, yeah, let's, well, staff will say in the middle, I'll say towards the top, but, and then you have the benefit packages that, you know, we can't compete with. We can't compete with somebody who's in the Florida retirement system. You can have, you know, somebody who's been a teacher for 10 years in the FRS, go work for a city like Lake Mary, because they're in FRS, I believe, yes. Lake Mary, Sanford. Sanford's in FRS, and continue accruing their state benefits. Can't do that here. We don't have it. Mistake made many years ago, but just like, you know, there's many mistakes that we've made, I'm sure. 10, 12 years from now, 15 years from now, there'll be a whole different council up here, and I say this all the time, they'll be sitting up here going, oh hell, what were those people thinking back in 2018? Hopefully, hopefully, we've got it on the right track. So, you know, with all that said, I've spoken way too long. I hope I gave everybody a little bit better understanding of what this is all about. And honestly, when that letter came out, I should have sat down in front of a video camera with Diana Cicado and just explained it to everybody. Because I think if the video would have been out there and I would have been able to explain it, again, you might not have liked it, but at least you would have been coming in here not liking it for the right reasons. With that, I will end. We do have a motion on the table. I'll go up and down one more time. I'll start on my left. Keith, anything to add?
Nope.
Steve?
No, sir.
Bob? Councilwoman? Mr. Cobb, Mr. Groot?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All righty. Well, with that being said, I'll call the vote. Motion on the table is to adopt. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
There you go. See, that's a nay of convenience, everybody. That's what that's called. But can't vote for something all along and then just not fund it, but we'll see. We'll see how that goes. All right.
All along, I said I'd only be in favor of it if we funded it with millage and subtracted it from the general budget, so I've been consistent the whole time through.
Okay. Did we not set the millage already, though? We already set the millage. We voted to do that a month ago. We can't raise it now.
Well, we can if we subtract the millage from the general fund. It still works.
All right.
But it's funded that way.
With that being said, Megan and I got our customary little back and forth done because what would a city council meeting be if we didn't? With that being said, we are going to go on to reports, and Mr. Cobb, you're up.
I have no report, Mayor.
Mr. Groot?
Just briefly, on your dais is the letter, which I transmitted to you all several times, which is the modified response on the charter school Burt Harris-
Is that the email that you had sent us?
Yes, sir.
Has anything changed since that email was sent?
No, sir. It just takes out the residential option.
Okay.
As you had discussed at the litigation strategy meeting, and now you-
Do you need consensus from-
I actually need a motion to approve the revised letter.
Is there a motion?
Well, can you repeat that one more time?
It just, this is the response to the charter school summit Burt Harris claim, which the first letter went out, and it had a residential option as something that the city would propose. This takes that residential option out.
I'll make a motion.
All right, motions are second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any further discussion? Hearing non-call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Folks, let me tell you what this is all about real quick. We're being sued because we denied a development that the developer feels like he has the right to build. So, to just think everybody comes in here and gets everything rubber stamped, that's just not true. So, all righty. Mr. Groot, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
All righty. Councilwoman, you're up.
A little bit ago, we did a study for having golf carts be used in Twin Rivers. Nobody came and registered, so that trial ordinance, I believe it's sunset, in looking at where people ride around in golf carts, I'm hoping that there might be some consensus from you guys to consider doing that in a new location and see if anybody will register a golf cart. And more specifically, I think it might be fascinating to do it within about two miles of the edge of Oviedo on the park. And that one includes Stone Hill, down the Lake Jessup area, and then the core there. So, people from Mead Manor and those areas, Kingsbridge West, could come to Oviedo on the park in some fashion other than, you know, my preferred mode of transportation is bike. I've noticed that this is, is it catching on as fast as I was hoping it would? But there are quite a few people who do have golf carts in this area, and that may be something that could help with a little consolidation of parking and make it a little bit more accessible for us.
I don't know. I don't know if those roads can, right, doesn't have to be on a 30 mile an hour road or something.
Well, the first thing you would do, if you desire to even look into it, you'd have to direct the police chief to do a study, because that's the first thing that's required, is a study as to whether or not the area is an appropriate area for golf. Well, police chief or somebody else.
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Cobb. I spoke to the chief about this a little bit, and I think that we can, we can get, anybody that goes and gets their golf cart registered, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, if they get their golf cart registered as a vehicle, they could drive on any road that is at, what, 35 miles an hour or less? So, they just have to meet the requirements.
It has to be a road worth what's cut.
Yeah. So, you could do it tomorrow in your neighborhood if you just go down and get a tag for your golf cart and make sure it's worthy.
It's not just any golf cart, though, so it has to be a little bit higher standard. And I don't know the specifics of vehicles like that, but if the cost is substantially greater to have this special kind, and we can come up with a way to make it accessible to more people, just throw it out there. Discussion item later.
No, why don't we make this simple? Guys, is there consensus? Just let the chief look into the area and see if it's even feasible?
Sure.
There you go.
Thank you. Another issue that's been coming up a lot lately is street parking potentially creating an issue with emergency vehicles, in particular in Little Creek, and then somebody reached out also for a couple of streets in Alafera Woods that have been having an issue. So, it's going to become more and more of a problem as we continue to be an urban area. I'm not sure really what to do with it, but if there's consensus-
You want to ban street parking?
No, no, not necessarily. Let's perhaps consider making this a discussion item so we can figure out what an appropriate solution is.
There you go. You should talk to the Winter Springs commissioners before you go down that road. They lifted all the ban on street parking. But anyway.
Yeah, maybe like one side of the road or the other side. We can discuss that in a later game.
It's a problem in many of the neighborhoods.
It is. Yours, yours is bad, too. And eventually, somebody's going to try to get through there, the fire truck, and it's going to be an issue. And, you know, what do you do? You have to choose. Are you going to scrape everybody's cars up and then there's liability or what?
Chief, why do fire trucks have big steel bumpers on the front?
[laughing]
I'm sorry, Megan, I had to ask him.
Yeah, you can get them out of the way.
He said that one Sunday or something.
Another issue that keeps on coming up, the entire time I've been up here, is developers' agreements expiring and causing us grief. I'm not sure if we can come up with some kind of policy that could just be in play at all times to deal with this, but we've got the issue with, long time, not long time, the first one that got here was the Twin Rivers issue where the developers' agreement maybe it vested, maybe it didn't, the rules have changed, and then the rights were uncertain. Then we've got this lawsuit here where a developer agreement expired and people aren't sure what the rights are. And then more recently, we've got Kingsbridge East has an issue where the developers' agreement has expired, and the people who were there prior to that neighborhood going in were told that there would never be lights and that there would be a certain style of fencing. And now the developers' agreement, you know, it's gone. And then the other one is Albertson's. And that one's not such a big deal because it's just commercial, but when we have residential or residential with commercial components of PUDs, I guess it's probably more of a legal question, is there anything that we can do as a city to guard against finding ourselves surprised that 25 years after a developers' agreement is negotiated, now people are wanting to renegotiate the terms of that?
That's been a common, a long time discussion about, between me and staff. Make a long story short, PUD development agreements are no longer done as statutory development agreements. That caused the issue, so you wouldn't have a PUD expiring in today's world. A statutory development agreement would, has statutory maximums, so you have to have an expiration date in those.
So, there's nothing, policy-wise, there's not anything we can do to guard against the next one that expires?
The next, you're talking about PUDs?
The next statutory one, I guess, that has an end date. Okay.
Statutory's have to have, they have a time limit. They can be renewed, but the legislature has imposed a 30-year limit now. Started at 10, and then it went to 15, 20, and now it's up to 30.
But now, these are out of fashion, so we're not going to have an issue 30 years from now with things expiring? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, what we've done, Councilwoman, is that we've created PUD as a zoning district. And so, everything that we do on inside of a PUD now is adopted as part of an ordinance.
Gotcha.
And so, that makes, that brings the permanency that you're looking for. And you're right, we do struggle every day with these older planning developments that had a, well, at the time when they were adopted, either a 10 or 20-year effective date on them. And, you know, the hard part about it is, is that they have PUD zoning rather than having a standard zoning. And so, trying to determine what the development rights are is very, very difficult, and we struggle with it daily. And would love, I've been on the same, almost, and I think Mr. Groot would say, I've been on a crusade for the past 20 years trying to figure out how we can make those things work. And it's tough. It really is. That's why we went in our land development code, we went to a non-statutory development agreement, so that we could, instead of looking at an effective date 20 years down the road, we looked at performance standards. If they met the performance standards, it keeps going. And so, those are things, it's just things that we tried to do, but it wasn't anything that we could do that our predecessors had already approved.
All right, thank you. And the last thing is bears. They're everywhere. There is one at the gas station across from my house. Like, I back up to a gas station on 426. They've been found in the Oviedo High School area. They're everywhere. So, I'm hoping that perhaps as a city, we can work on a little bit of outreach, maybe in our water bills or something, to help educate people about the importance of figuring out how to not let the bears be fed, because a fed bear is a dead bear. I saw a little sticker the other day that said that. And a lot of people, myself included, I don't have a garage. I keep my trash outside, and the compost is separate, so, you know, if the bears are going to get something, it's going to be some really gross compost. But a lot of people keep their trashcans outside, so for anybody sitting here, if you could have started encouraging your neighbors to figure out how to not put your, keep your garbage inside somehow, don't put it out on the curb ahead of time, the night before, if possible, to just do it the next day. And then maybe over time, as a city, we can figure out a way to come up with like some bear clamps or, you know, some kind of inexpensive solution for people who are-
Know what the best thing is? Chief, you used to say it all the time, Chad now, right? Put your garbage out at 6:30 and they won't be there, right? Don't give them that food, so.
All right, well, education's not a bad idea. Patrick, can you work on something? Maybe we can push it out on the website, push it out on the newsletters. I know you've been working on this issue, so.
Because people feel like it's pretend, but like, it's not pretend anywhere. It's truly everywhere.
You need a couple of families walking down Coach.
Yeah. It's bizarre, because you're in a very, I feel like you're in a very urban area, and I think, you know, I'm on a highway, so it's not pretend, but people who haven't seen the bears yet don't believe it, so.
And I think it's very important, though, that we push out, that folks, I mean, you know, it's really cute that they run to social media and they post a picture of the bear, but you've got to go on to the FWC website, you've got to report that you saw the bear, because that's the only way that we could be designated a, what do they call it? Bear area? Huh?
Bear Wise.
Yeah, Bear Wise Community, and then there's some grants that we can apply for and, you know, things that can be done. But we can't do that if folks are just, you know, putting the picture of the bears up on Facebook. That's not going to help them. So, please, if you're watching out there, if anybody's still watching out there, FWC, report the bear. It's a little button. You just, you don't have to give them a picture, you just have to tell them you saw a bear. And then they start to track these guys, and gals.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Great. Keith, you're up. Deputy Mayor. Just a couple items. One is, we had a pretty good time at the League of Cities this weekend. We did. Bobby, did you get your bag of pothole remover? They said they delivered it to you yesterday.
Yes, we did.
Give it a try, see how it works. I thought I was pretty impressed with it. It looked like a pretty good product. Oh, that guy actually delivered that bag of stuff?
What was it?
Oh, Keith found some guy to give us a bag of gravel. That's what it was all about. He said if he put your car in his box, he'd make sure you got a 60-pound bag of pothole filler. You just pour it in, you run a car over it a few times. He did. Well, try it out, see how it works, see what the cost benefit is. We did talk to Duke. Keith finds all this stuff when we go to Florida League of Cities.
I thought Domino's would fix all the potholes.
Yep, we can hire them. We did talk to Duke. I did talk to the golf bike guy. He's going to go play the course when he found out we bought his bikes.
We gave him back already.
We gave him back?
We gave him back. He said he was going to go pick him up on the way back from League of Cities.
Oh, all right. Otherwise, a good conference, and the theme was, was the threat of our ability to rule ourselves. It's called the home rule. It was voted on by referendum in the state, and I guess 50 years ago, they said 1968. And it means that cities should be allowed to rule themselves, provide the amenities and services that they want to, that their citizens want them to, and the state does not have a right to infringe upon that. Well, the state has been doing that for the last 10 years. This year, it's the $25,000 additional homestead exemption, which is great for homeowners. It's just not so good for business owners or people who rent. Oh, I didn't even mention that. $1.2 million out of our budget last year, folks. Remember that 13 million I told you from property taxes? That thing passes, 1.2. Yeah, so we're, you know. We get hit the hardest out of every city in Seminole County. So, part of the issue we addressed tonight was Mr. Boob's ability to manage a budget and have at least the Lightning and Enterprise Fund and save him, give him some space to maneuver.
Got all of them.
One other thing I just want to mention, I got a newspaper article here, and it's like one of those things, you know, the first sentence catches your eye. It started off, it said, the Orlando area, the six-county Orlando metropolitan area is growing at 1,000 people a week, and it's been doing that for the last 60 years. And so, when I read that, I said, let's do the math. Let's take Orlando 60 years ago, 1960. I'm just guessing they were, you know, the whole area was maybe 500,000 people. You add that up, and our area grows to 3.5 million over 60 years. If you don't build up and you build everyone a quarter acre lot with a big backyard and swing sets and everything, over 60 years, guess what? You've got to spread out. Guess what we are? We're part of that process. Every neighborhood in this city is part of that urban sprawl process, and, folks, it's a never-ending battle. The arguments we're having over the rural boundary is just the next phase, and frankly, we need to fight the battle. Oviedo on the park was an attempt to try to build up and curb that type of urban sprawl. The conference this week gave us a lot of ideas, a lot of input. They're fighting the legislature to try to slow them down. In my mind, I think it's a battle between the big cities and the legislatures that are in the rural areas, but nonetheless, it's going to affect us in a negative way, and we've got to be able to deal with it, so. Anything else?
That's it.
Well, I have no report, because everything's been covered, other to say. The Council Cup game, Hagerty-Oviedo, is September seventh this year, and I think it's at Hag-
Uwe's.
Yeah, I believe it's over at Hagerty, and I think they're doing a fundraiser, chief, for that young man that you mentioned with the cancer. I think that's gonna be the whole theme for the football game this year. They wanna bring the community together over the football game, rather than making it into the rivalry that it's been, so that'll be September seventh. They usually start around seven o'clock or so over at the high school. Bob, you're up.
I don't have a whole lot to add to-
No, that's perfect. Councilman Henkin.
But, I drew the Rockin' in the Park. I went both days. It was a great event. It was a lot of fun, and it was, I felt like it was well-attended, and everybody enjoyed themselves there, despite all the rain that we had. It still turned out to be good. I don't really have too much more to say, and that's it.
You're up, Steve.
I never have a report, but I'll just close with just two thoughts. I just wanna piggyback. Councilman Britton made me think, as we were talking about that streetlight fee, and to those of you that stayed around and put up with us tonight, it was a little bit long, we usually don't run about, so thank you for coming tonight, safe home. But, you know, one of the other issues, when we think about fees, something just to think about, you know, as Keith said, the state would like nothing more to take over every city. That's the end game. We can only raise our millage rate to a certain amount. Ten is the max, right? So, if we ever get to that point, and things come on, now we can't fund it, you know, you run to the county or the state, or you run to the county, and then the state take over the county, but, you know, like the homestead, third-generation homestead, that's gonna pass. It's gonna be one point two million less, as the mayor talked about, that we wanna have next year, so, you know, all the nice things that cities do, and Oviedo's special, but there's a lot of other special places, too, so all the nice things that cities do would not be done, you know, when you have a big, you know, totalitarian government telling you what to do.